Good evening colleagues and staff. Before we commence with the meeting, I would just like to say a few words. And thanks and appreciation of the cards and letters and phone calls that were received as a consequence of our recent bereavement. The family are very grateful for that support and it was indeed a support during a very difficult time and I wanted to consider it. Thank you very much indeed. Mr Menney?
Thank you Lord Provost. May I begin this evening's proceedings by reminding members of the procedure. Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council and its committees, which is being held remotely in terms of section 43 of the Local Governance in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the meeting chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting, but if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on. Your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the meeting chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and members of the public please not post messages in the meeting chat? Where items are for noting or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the meeting chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would not members not use the meeting chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the committee and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries Lord Provost, so we can move to the formal business of the meeting. Lord Provost, members of the council, there are two items of business. Item B, the minutes which are for information and record purposes. Thank you. And item C, general businesses, vacancies, Dundee City Health and Social Care Integration Joint Board. It is reported that councillor Smith has intimated her resignation as a voting member. It is further reported that councillor Short has intimated her resignation as a proxy member. The committee's instructions are requested as to the filling of these vacancies. Lord Provost, councillor Dawson wishes to speak.
Sir Dawson?
Thank you Lord Provost. In relation to the voting member, we nominate councillor Lynne Short and in relation to the proxy member, we nominate councillor Stephen Rome.
Right. Are these agreed?
Thank you Lord Provost. That concludes the business of the city council. Would you please remain in the chair for the meeting of Dundee City Council as Fleming trustees? Mrs Abrog?
Thank you Roger. I'll start with taking a roll call. Lord Provost?
Present.
Councillor Alexander? Councillor Alexander? Deputy Lord Provost Campbell? Deputy Lord Provost? Councillor Dawson?
Present. Just to say Tracy, I have seen John in the sidebar, I don't know if he's having problems with his system and not being able to respond.
Councillor Flynn?
Present. Just hearing the chat, councillor Alexander says he's here.
Yep, I've noted that, thank you. Councillor Hunter?
Present.
Councillor Lynne?
Present.
Councillor Rendall?
I'm here.
Bailey Roberts?
I'm here.
Councillor Rome?
Present.
Councillor Ross?
I'm here.
Bailey Sawyers?
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Short? Councillor Smith? Bailey Keenan?
Present.
Councillor Crookshank?
Present.
Councillor McCready?
Present.
Councillor McCarvin?
Present.
Councillor Malone?
I'm here.
Councillor Mara?
Present.
Councillor Richardson?
Present.
Bailey Wright?
Present.
Bailey Scott?
I'm here.
Councillor Hay?
Present.
Councillor Scott?
Here.
Bailey McPherson?
Good evening, present.
Councillor Duncan?
Here.
Councillor Murray?
I'm here.
Thank you. That now takes us on to the city council as Fleming trustees. Can I first ask, does any member have any declaration of interest? That being the case, we'll move on to the only item on the agenda, item two, External Wall Installation Home Energy Efficiency Programme for Scotland 2020/2021 programme. Your approval for the tender is requested.
Lord Provost, councillor Flynn wishes to speak.
Councillor Flynn?
Thank you Lord Provost. Can I just say, I welcome this report, I think it's actually beneficial to a number of residents in the Fleming Gardens and I think they've been crying out for this to be done for such a long time. I think they'll be delighted to see the external wall installation going up on these properties and it'll actually save them money, it'll be beneficial to their heating and it'll be beneficial to their wellbeing. So thank you for that Lord Provost.
Is that all? Is there any otherwise agreed?
That concludes the business Lord Provost. The next committee is the Community Safety and Public Protection Committee.
Good evening committee. We've got Willie helping us this afternoon.
Thanks very much Deputy convener. So firstly, are there any declarations of interest? Okay, there being no declarations then it takes on to item two, Scottish Fire and Rescue Service Quarterly Performance Report. This is before you.
I'd just like to bring in area manager Gordon Pride, who I believe wants to share something with us this evening before he goes through the report over to you, Mr Pride.
Thank you very much Deputy convener. As members are aware, I have worked in the Teyside area and been the local senior officer covering Dundee for three years now. I'm now moving on to a new job within our national teams. We have identified a replacement for me as area commander, Stephen Wood. The vice, sorry, the deputy convener has been kind, has kindly allowed me to invite Stephen into the meeting today so he can first of all see the processes, ensuring that our handover that we are working through just now is managed seamlessly. In addition to that, I'm able to give members reassurance that Stephen's a very experienced officer and he will add significant value to the strong partnerships that we already have in Dundee. Thank you Deputy convener.
Thank you. And welcome Mr Wood. Would you like to go on with the report please?
Thank you very much. Before I ask members to note, scrutinise and question the report, there are a couple of elements I'd like to highlight prior to asking area commander, sorry, group commander Graham Smart to pick up the details of the report for members. If I could take members to page eight, the performance summary. On page eight, in the performance summary, we identify the 12 headline indicators that we continue to focus on. Currently, seven of these headline indicators are anticipated or projected to be below target at the end of the year. We have one that is projected to be slightly above target and we have four that are projected to be more than 10% above target. But we continue to focus our activities and prevention activities round these to ensure they're managed in an appropriate fashion. And now with your permission Deputy convener, I'll pass on to group commander Graham Smart to give some more details on the report.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to come in?
Thank you very much and good evening everybody. I'd just like to start off actually just touching on the areas of headline target one and two, so in relation to accidental dwelling fires. So although it's above the headline target for the year to date, we have actually seen a reduction of 13% since last quarter and in particular non-fatal fire casualties are down and encouraging 77% compared with the same period last year. When we look into that in a little bit more detail and give you some context to it actually, a quarter of accidental fires during Q3 were started due to cooking related incidents within the home. Now, that's not just isolated to Dundee and Teyside, that's a common trend over a long period of time throughout Scotland. And again, when we actually look into the cooking related incidents themselves and break it down even further, certainly, you know, with a focus in this quarter in particular, distraction appears to be the main human factor involved in these fires starting in the first place with the household occupants. So again, as we've been doing for a number of years now, again, as a single service, we continue to provide home fire safety visits to members of our communities and especially targeting those who are our most vulnerable as a top priority. And that has also continued even though we've had the complications along with everything else to do with Covid. If I could perhaps move on to a little bit of focus, in particular on pages 15 and 16 of the report, that's the numbers at the top of your document, not at the footer. Just to really touch on a little bit in relation to road traffic collisions. So again, on page 15, although we've seen a reduction by a third in RTCs, well attended from last quarter, unfortunately, we've got a fatality at one of these road traffic collisions which occurred during the quarter. And as a result of that, obviously with the headline target, we always try to strive along with our fire deaths, that we strive to have zero RTC deaths. Non-fatal RTC casualties however are down 40% from the previous quarter. So again, that's a very encouraging downward trend in that aspect. And obviously we'll work with our partners and the police in particular. As you know, over the years, we've had numerous campaigns to improve road safety. Moving on, if I could turn your attention over to pages 17 and 18, I'll just focus a little bit on reducing unwanted fire alarm signals. So again, our focus is to continue to improve fire safety management, raise awareness and in an overall effort to reduce the impact of unwanted fire alarm signals, which obviously creates a trend unnecessarily on our resources where there could be obviously a more serious incident occurring at the same time. So year-to-date attendance, down 22% on the same period from the previous quarter and again, it's a gradually continuing downward trend over the longer term. So we've seen a significant reduction over the last few years in terms of UFRAS incidents. And again, that ties in with our national strategy of obviously how we want to tackle these unwanted incidents. Moving on to deliberate primary fires. So again, we're down 37% on the previous quarter, however overall we have increased against the same quarter last year. But the year-to-date figures are currently above the headline target and again, we'll obviously monitor that very closely as we approach towards the end of quarter four. We've also seen an increase of deliberate secondary fires against the same quarter for last year. But again, however, over the longer term, we're seeing a continual downward trend with a coordinated multi-agency tasking group, which is well established in the city, in the local area to focus on reducing these unwanted deliberate fires. And again, if you turn to appendix one towards the end of the document, you'll see obviously some details there and examples of very effective proactive work which was undertaken through successful partnership in the lead-up to Bonfire Night in particular. So that's part of the reason obviously why we had a little bit of a spike there in quarters three compared with obviously the other quarters. Just as a little bit of a focus for you actually, because it's probably of a bit of an interest in terms of our attendance at bonfires. Again, obviously it's our busiest time of the year historically, not just again in the city, but for across the whole of Scotland. So in 2019, we had 22 bonfire related incidents in Dundee and unfortunately that also resulted in two attacks on our fire crews. This year, we had 31 in Dundee and again, a similar number of attacks unfortunately against our crews. So I would like to finish at that point and invite any questions from the committee please.
So first, and if I could please bring in Bailey Wright, she's the first question.
Thank you convener. Yes, obviously it's the item I want to ask about is on page eight, it's H1 double one, the deliberate primary fires that have gone up. Swap to page 19 on the table eight, it's gone from 40 to 57. Is there a reason for such a high jump and the red status that's obviously marked? Is that unusual because it seems to be that going back to 1718, it was about the 57, 18, 19, 58. Could it be that you did something really right in 1920 when it was reduced to 40, which is 37% reduction? Or, and it's just gone back to normal or are you hopeful that you'll be able to keep the low figure?
Yeah, thanks very much for your question. It is interesting to have a look back at the previous years in terms of year-to-date stats. I mean, I think it is important to just acknowledge and forgive me if I've got this wrong, but I think it was perhaps yourself that asked. Again, if we thought that there was a trend in an increase in fires in the home as a result of obviously everyone being in lockdown, I'm sure it's yourself that asked the question. So again, obviously we need to take that into account in terms of the overall stats there, that they are going to be skewed as a result of that. But it is an area along with all the rest of the stats that we're continuing looking at. Perhaps just pass on to Gordon to see if he wants to add any further comment here.
Yes, thank you very much. Very much it's a multi-agency focus around that deliberate reduction, deliberate fires. We have strong multi-agency links with not only the local authority, police and education, but the wider partnership. We continue to work to educate and ensure that where possible, we drive these down. There hasn't been any significant changes to our activities. We continue, we will continue to monitor and review these elements and again, working with partners, if we do identify any individuals or any trends, we'll make sure we target them in either an educational or an enforcement manner supported by other partners.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay, you happy for me to move on then Bailey Wright?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, can I please bring in councillor Duncan?
Thanks for that. Before I ask the question, can I just take this opportunity on behalf of myself and Bailey McPherson to say to Gordon Pride, all the best for your future. It's been a genuine pleasure working with you and hope to, you know, establish good relationships with your successor. So all the best. The, my question is, if I may, it's around the very welcome reduction in unwanted fire alarm signals. It's been a persistent problem, so it's good to see it going in a downward direction. But I'm just aware that, you know, during the period in question, it's been very abnormal times and several of the premises and locations that are usually associated with generating these calls have been either completely or partially closed. I'm just wondering, what's your feeling? Is this a genuine reduction or does the Covid effect have anything to do with it?
Thank you very much. And first of all, thank you very much for those kind words. Just to respond, I thoroughly enjoyed my period of time, the three years I've been here. As I said earlier on, made lots of good friends and I'm sure we will continue to keep those relationships. And again, can I reassure you that Stephen Wood, you'll have, I'm sure be able to build strong relationships with him going forward. Moving to the UFRAS, our report in general is very much a report where we compare ourselves to previous times and that has worked well historically because it allows us to identify where things are improving or where we need to do more focus. Going through the pandemic piece, there has been specific issues with reduction in people's movement, more people in the house and a reduction of people in the workplaces. So it's probably very hard to have that true comparison. But what we are as a national service, we've got a number of longstanding processes to drive down and support the reduction in UFRAS. In addition, we're taking this opportunity to look at other models. We're still looking internally at them with significant engagement going on with sort of, we're starting to engage with business communities and other elements, just to see how we can work better and significantly reduce the number of unwanted fire alarm signals and the number of blue light journeys as well to release the impact. So I would anticipate that much of the improvement you see will be related to Covid, however not all of it will be. But again, can I reassure all members, it's very much one of our key topics to allow us to drive down because it will generate a lot of spare capacity for us to go and do other positive work if we can reduce that number. In addition to that, it will make businesses more efficient if they're not having to have processes stop and all staff evacuate. So we continue to focus and we'll continue to drive it down.
Okay, thanks. Thanks very much for that. And I mean, I do appreciate that some of what I asked is somewhat unquantifiable because these are odd times to say the least. But I mean, it's definitely, I think it's safe to say it's heading in the right direction and you've hit the nail on the head that the more that these unnecessary burdens on your time can be driven in a downward direction, the more SFRS is free to do other things. So thanks for that.
Okay, so that appears to be all of the questions this evening for our colleagues at Fire and Rescue. So can I also take this opportunity to thank Mr Pride on behalf of the convener and myself, the deputy convener and the wider committee for all his support and diligence over the last number of years, it's very much appreciated. And if you could take back your, our wishes to the crews and ancillary staff that are keeping us safe throughout the city, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks convener. That takes us on to item three then, item having been noted, Dundee local policing area quarterly police report.
Okay, so this time we'll bring in chief superintendent, Mr Todd, but he also has a new face with them. I believe that we've all been contacted by Chief Inspector Ross Fitzgerald, but he tells me that he goes by Ross, but he's been joining us this evening as well. So thank you gentlemen, I'll just pass over to you.
Thank you. Yeah, indeed, I'd like to introduce Ross Fitzgerald, new chief inspector within the area command for Dundee. So he takes over from Dave McIntosh, whom many of you know very well. Ross is well known to Teyside and Dundee and has been in and out of Teyside over a number of years in different roles, most recently as staff officer to the assistant chief constable down at Tully Allen. So Ross has a really welcome and Kent face to come back to the area and I know he's reached out to folks already and Ross has been here for a couple of months, but this is his first scrutiny meeting. I'd like to introduce the report proper please, if I may. So the report, as members will know, updates against our local police plan and it also shows how our plan supports the Police Scotland strategic outcomes and of course, as important, the city plan for Dundee itself. I don't intend to go through the plan in any great detail or the report correction in any great detail as members will have their questions, but I would just like to draw members to pages 71 and 72, which are two new additions, which I trust meet with members' approval. We've added in some information around Covid-19 activity, but it's a challenge clearly to compare and contrast that activity given the unique nature of it, but I will cover as best I can. And the second element at page 72 is that we are the first area in the country to include some complaints data in this current format and that follows on very clearly from Dame Ailish Angelini's review that members will have noted before Christmas. That is an initial attempt at how we can try and demonstrate what is quite a challenging landscape to articulate and it will develop over time, much based upon your feedback and questioning. So if members are content with those two, then I would intend to leave those in and allow them to develop over time as we become more sophisticated in our ability to articulate those. So members, I'm happy obviously to take any questions.
Okay, so first up with the question is Bailey Wright, please.
Thank you convener. On page 33, we have antisocial behaviour and we have the three boxes which is included with violence and this comes under the violence and disorder heading. And I'm a bit confused, is this covering other or all types of violence and disorder crimes or is it only covering antisocial behaviour one? And if it's not, I would ask if there's a possibility to have some sort of analysis or breakdown in these stats, because I'm very keen to understand how the stats are made up and what other information could be included that would help to inform us of what's happening in our wards.
Thank you councillor. So the violence disorder and antisocial behaviour is our strategic priority for the division as members will know. And throughout the report, what you will see are certain crime types associated with those matters. So for violence disorder and antisocial behaviour, we include serious and common assault, robberies, assault on emergency service workers. These are what are referred to as our control strategy. So there are many other types of incidents that sit underneath that, but these are the ones that we mainly track. We can't track everything and prioritise everything. So these are the ones we mainly track, which is as a consequence of not only our professional judgement and experience, but also our strategic assessment that we produce each year for our local policing area. So I'm happy councillor, if you wanted to sit with Ross at some point and perhaps go over some of the details specific to your own area, but my nervousness would be that if I bring forward every crime and crime type that might be considered violence disorder and antisocial behaviour, it would overwhelm the document.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying and I know that you're probably busy enough to start breaking down stats, but I think it's something that's a blight actually and it's one of the things I have to deal with on a daily basis is antisocial behaviour problems and the problems that then gives to the people that are on the receiving end of it. And I do know that we do have another report coming up on item four about antisocial behaviour, which is really quite good. And I was just wondering if it was, if we were able to do it in the council, if the police were able to do it as well. I mean, I don't want to know every door where the crime has been, but it would be useful to where it was only antisocial tenants, antisocial behaviour, if it could be done separately.
Councillor, thank you. I will reflect on that because I understand your question and the desire for that. My challenge will be that antisocial behaviour is distinctly different from criminality on some occasions and what I would wish to do is conflate the two into the same thing because clearly they aren't, however much antisocial behaviour is criminality. So the better we can present that information to yourselves, then I will reflect upon that and see what I can do to produce a better report to cover that area of high importance to the city.
Okay, thanks for that. Thank you.
Bailey Wright, if it perhaps helps to kind of make it a bit clearer, what I did this evening was asked if police could hold on so that they could be there available for when we did our antisocial behaviour report as well, so if there was any tie-in. Next up please.
Can I say Lynne, thanks for that because I think it's quite important that the police are actually there during that. during that debate because it does tie in, you know, because it is really, in most people's view, a crime. So thanks for that.
No, thank you. Thank you very much. Councillor Duncan, please.
Yeah, thanks for that.
Sorry, I do apologise. It's councillor McCarvin first. I don't want.
All right, okay, no worries.
Beg your pardon.
Thanks Chair. That's not the first time tonight that's happened to me. No, you, by the way, in another meeting. Thanks Chair. Question for the Divisional Commander. And again, we're here as a committee to provide a level of scrutiny on the report. But I feel a bit more detail in the narrative and what the underlying issues are behind the crime types identified. I think if we had that level of detail, touching on Bailey Wright's question, I think it'd be more meaningful and allow us to better understand the cause of why these crimes are occurring. And if there's any particular spikes in crimes during whatever reporting period. Because if you look in the report, it's very helpful that you see when it mentions common assault, you know that there's the link to alcohol and substance misuse and it states it's a key driver. That's good. The report also mentions in robbery crimes that you're likely, the victim and the offender are going to be known to each other. It tells us in nearly half the crimes, an offensive weapon is used and it tells you what property is stolen. And even in the drugs section, it mentions, touches on the financial impact of Covid maybe being an ancillary driver. So for me, that's stuff of value when I'm reading the report. What it doesn't tell me however, is where the crimes are occurring. The causal factor is poverty, a causal factor in these crimes. Location, what is your hotspot area in Dundee? When are they happening? What time of day is robberies being committed in this reporting period? Or indeed, is the problem being displaced into another area? Also, I mentioned the preventative measures, how well or how no so well have we done to eradicate some problems. So there's a lot of good information within the report, Chair. But I'm not being critical, I just feel it would work better if the likes of the day and time preventative measures that took place or causal factors were actually captured within the report moving forward.
Well, as Chair this evening, I obviously don't dictate how the reports are written. So that would be up to the police to decide. So I'll pass it over to them, please.
No, thank you. And thanks to councillor McCarvin for the question. Clearly, as councillors will reflect, the document itself has developed significantly from what was previously presented and it continues to develop. And I will take on board the feedback. It is my desire to give you enough information to provide that scrutiny and to compare and contrast over time as well as over location. The challenge for us is, if I can be frank, we simply don't have all the answers. If we knew the causation factors for a lot of these crimes, we would deal with them. Sometimes we just can't, we can't identify what that single cause or what those causes actually are. They can be very multiple. In regards to locations, date, times and dates, to an extent, some of that might be available and we'll see what we can do to provide that. What I am keen to do is continue to represent a report that covers Dundee and doesn't break down to too small an extent. Because again, we only have so much capacity and I need to be careful that we don't bring to this committee too local an issue and instead encourage locality inspectors to have those conversations with you separately as they apply to your own individual wards. And I would be grateful for any feedback if that wasn't happening. Because certainly Ross and I are strongly committed to making sure that you get that local information. But nonetheless, councillor McCarvin's points are well made and I'll take away considerations to how we continue to develop the report to give that meaningful insight that's asked for.
Thank you, Mr Todd. And Ross did send us all an email with each of the names of the locality inspectors and his mobile number. So he's very open to us getting in touch direct.
Can I just add as well, and it's touching on what the Divisional Commander said about the local inspectors. And I think it's worthy to note, for me, it was an example of the joined up approach that I seen this, well, last week, Police Scotland, the community wardens. And on the topic that was covered in the local media with the robberies now, the local inspector was in touch with the ward councillors, made them aware at early engagement. The female offenders were arrested, you've seen that in the media, quickly arrested. And I personally seen community wardens patrolling in the area early evening. So the high profile patrolling. So for me, you witnessed everything working, yeah? So that's a good, that's a good example of seeing things working in partnership.
Perfect. Partnership is the way, especially that's why we have these committees like this. Can I now bring in councillor Duncan, please?
Yeah, thanks for that. I'm looking at pages 33 and 57, which deal with a 24% increase in drink and drug driving. And I can only, you know, echo the, what's in the report, that it's extremely disappointing to see that people are still willing to take the risk and drive under the influence of alcohol or drugs. Now, given the period that the report deals with, which again, because of Covid and lockdown and so forth, I would have thought that, you know, movement of people driving around in general would have been greatly reduced. And also certainly for some of these periods, public houses, nightclubs and the like have been shut. I'm just, I just like some insight into what's maybe behind this unwelcome increase.
Thank you councillor. Yeah, it's extremely disappointing. It's wholly unacceptable and it's an excusable behaviour by irresponsible drivers. And it's one of the key five causation factors for serious and fatal injuries. So you'll get no argument from me in regards to that. We've maintained a significant roads policing capability throughout the Covid-19 lockdown measures. As members will appreciate, we had to move some resource around to meet new demand and to also mitigate some of the challenges that Covid-19 brings that members don't need me to explain. But we maintain that capability on our roads despite the number of vehicles actually driving on the roads reducing. So it's allowed our staff to be as proactive and productive as they possibly can be. So they are obviously focused quite significantly on that drink and drug driving. So there is nowhere to hide on the road, I guess, is the summary of that. What I would also say though, and I think I raised this previously with councillors, that we must just caution as well in the figures comparing and contrasting because the same period last year, we didn't have the same equipment available to us that we have now around drug driving. So we now have roadside drug testing kits. So police, roads policing specialist trained officers can very quickly make an assessment, much like a drug version of a breathalyzer that we're all, we're not necessarily personally accustomed to, but all of us recognise and we'd know what they are. It's the same idea and from that we take them into custody and get further samples that can then be analysed. And if there's drugs in their body, then much the same as alcohol, it can be dealt with. So what that's meant is that rather than trying to prove unfitness through the quantity of drugs that have been taken, if you're over a prescribed limit, then you are reported for that to the crown. So what that has meant, of course, is that we've seen an increase in those crimes. But does that necessarily mean there's an increasing prevalence of those crimes? It's very doubtful. It's probably as a consequence of our increased capability. What we will see however, I am sure going into the final quarter of this year, is that we were fully up and running with that equipment at this point last year in Q4. So I would see a more levelling off and for members to be able to be more able to compare and contrast over time as to whether or not we're seeing an increase. But we are strongly committed to this area. Our roads policing colleagues are massively committed to what they're doing here and they will continue to relentlessly pursue people that present in a way that justifies them to be stopped and checked. So thank you for that question councillor, because it is an area which I find extremely disappointing.
Can I just, can I just quickly say, I'm very grateful for all that because I'm really keen that the message gets out there that, you know, despite the pandemic circumstances, the police are very much on the case about drinking, drug driving. And particularly that the message gets out that, you know, drug, you know, you do have the drug testing capability now. And indeed, recently I've had occasion to inform the police about a few examples of what looks to be a light drug taken in my ward. So I'm very, very keen that, you know, the message gets out there. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Can I bring in Bailey McPherson, please?
Thanks very much, convener. My question's around assaults and particular information between pages 35 and 38 of the papers before us. As is alluded to in the report, the year-to-date increase in recorded crimes appears to be, and to quote, "directly linked to the relaxation of lockdown rules and the reopening of licensed premises." And I was just really wondering if Chief Superintendent Todd could perhaps comment on, given that we will hopefully in the not too distant future see the relaxation of level four restrictions and the easing of lockdown rules again. If there are, for example, any particular actions that Police Scotland is taking, which will hopefully avoid or at least mitigate against this sort of occurrence happening when lockdown rules are relaxed next. And I'm thinking of things around not just police resources and messaging to the public, but also if this is a feature, as I suspect, maybe not just a Dundee thing, it may be a, you know, a Scotland-wide thing. If that sort of information is fed into those at Scottish government level when the way in which lockdown restrictions are eased is taken into account.
Thank you councillor McPherson. So fundamentally, alcohol is often a determining factor in assaults. We find that the victim or and both the accused can be under the influence of alcohol, which can say can prompt the onset of violence. We have a problem with violence in our city. Make no bones about that. It's a challenge for us to deal with and it manifests itself in many different ways, particularly in domestic violence also. There is a correlation between the availability of alcohol and people being under the influence of alcohol. Quite evident that that's going to be the case. So as the licence trade reopens, that increases the availability. But what we need to be careful of is automatically assuming that on licence premises, the trade are in some way neglecting their duties and responsibilities to their own clientele. It's not always the case. We've some outstanding premises and outstanding relationships with the trade. These are their customers. They want to look after them. Tragically however, that's not always the case and we know there are some difficult premises out there. They are licensed ultimately by councillors. And if we find evidence of a licence premises that's not able to fulfil its objectives, then we can bring that evidence and information to committee for necessary considerations to any sanction that might be required. Evidently, there's also a need for us, as you're quite right, to feed that back into government. And we do that through our own SPA scrutiny at a corporate level as to how we might respond and what our plans would be as lockdowns are eased. So we're absolutely convinced that that will happen again as I feed back up nationally as to what our issues are. But I'll perhaps just ask Ross to come in and maybe just give an overview of what we did in response to that initial period and then what his plans are for locally, just on a very high level to give some assurance to councillors that we're not just going to wait for the assaults to happen and then respond. But just give them a moment to consider, one of the other elements that we're actively considering just now is how we actually police the city centre of Dundee, not just the night time economy, but the daytime economy. Because we have been able to not pay at the same level of attention that we have done previously because of the lockdown measures. Now clearly, we want that relaxed as an active member of our community. We want to see our city centres reopened, but it's going to present us with fresh challenges. So we are looking at that just now. Not quite sure what that means yet. But absolutely, we'll speak with councillors for that area and ultimately back here in due course if we make any changes there for the positive. So without further ado, I may be ask Ross if he's any further he wants to add.
No, thank you sir. I just, just coming in on that. So around our response to the pandemic in the past, we have clearly sought to analyse the information that's available to us. And that's been in the face of kind of generating heat maps around disorder around the city where those assaults have been taking place. So that we can then target our high visibility patrols into those areas as a preventative measure. On top of that, it's also been around looking at those addresses where social gatherings have been occurring in private premises most readily. So those repeat offenders where those kind of crimes of violence are also occurring. And by identifying those addresses, we're thereafter able to do those kind of prevention patrols and go and meet with people out with the kind of heat of those incidents and revisit them at a time when they're sober and influenced behaviour, when people are more open to that happening. And I guess just the last bit I would highlight as well is that that kind of partnership aspect we've spoken to, spoken about before. And we, on a daily basis, share information with colleagues and antisocial behaviour teams and highlight to them where those social gatherings and parties where alcohol has been consumed is taking place to bring in that range of partnership kind of supports that can also bring their power to bear around the antisocial behaviour. So there are a number of steps there around that kind of preventative space. And also our patrolling matrix is designed to try and prevent those crimes before they happen. And also to reverse that with them on those kind of sad instances where they do.
Okay, could I, at this point, convener, just thank Chief Superintendent Todd and Chief Inspector Fitzgerald. That was very detailed and very helpful. So I'm grateful to them for that.
Yes, of course. Thank you. And I think those of us who are in the Maryfield Ward had some correspondence from the local police office at the weekend. They are just reiterating 100% what you've just said there. So it is actually happening out there as well. So that's great. Can I now bring in councillor Philip Scott, please?
Yes, thank you, convener. Chief Superintendent Todd mentioned the information about police complaints and I think it's welcome that we've got that in the report. I just wonder if you want to elaborate on why police complaints have gone up in Dundee, but down in Angus and Perth and Kinross, please?
So therein, thank you councillor, therein lies part of the challenges that my response is going to be my judgment. I'm very difficult to support this with evidence. What we do know however, is that our demand in the city has increased during the lockdown period. And we've not seen that within the Angus area or within the rural part of Perth and Kinross. Although Perth City has seen an increase. My professional judgement tells me that we've obviously, we're seeing more demand within our urban environments than within our rural. And I think that's a reasonable assumption to make. The challenge that we've had as a service in regards to our approach is that a number of people wish us to be more firm in our approach and a number of people wish us to be less firm in our approach. And if we walk that delicate line, we end up pleasing nobody, but actually walk the correct line. And that's part of the challenge we have. So the report itself indicates that we've seen an increasing number of concerns raised or complaints about the police raised around how we have managed our response to Covid-19 incidents. And predominantly that's for those two reasons, either we should have done more or we should have done less. And we continue to analyse that. It's not to be flippant about those complaints. They're entirely valid and entirely right to be raised and it's entirely appropriate that we look at them. But it is very difficult for us to then drive our reduction in those by improving our service. When actually, as matter of what we do, we'll end up with a complaint from the person that wants the opposite outcome. So as I say, this is the start of us trying to bring more efficacy to how it is that we are responding to these complaints.
Mr Todd?
Okay, I'm grateful for that. Thank you.
Beg your pardon. Can I just confirm, has the Covid situation had an impact due to custody arrangements across the area?
Absolutely councillor. So we've closed one of our custody suites, which was in Perth, which has meant that we've brought more custody, we've brought all our custodies into Dundee. So that's from Perth and Kinross, from some areas of North Fife as well, where it's appropriate to do that. And obviously from Angus, which we've been doing for a while now. What that can mean is that we've seen an increase in violence within the cell blocks as custodies are being processed. They may not agree with what's happening to them and will assault police officers. So we have seen an increase there within that cell block. And that could be people from Perth and Kinross or from Angus. And that would then lead potentially into complaints about how they've been handled, which as I say are very legitimate. But those complaints may previously have been managed in Perth and Kinross, but are now being managed in Dundee as by virtue of the cell block being closed temporarily within Perth and Kinross.
And thank you for that. And can I now bring in councillor McDutty, please?
Thank you very much, convener. Can I draw attention to the discussion around fraud on pages 45 to 47? I mean, I think also, you know, the final kind of graph there shows that there is a higher prevalence of fraud per 10,000 of the population in Dundee than there is in the other parts of the vision or indeed in Scotland. I understand that there's a kind of discussion on page 46 about new ways. there's a kind of discussion on page 46 about new ways of counting this. And I think it is important, though, that this crime is counted, because I think it is something that we're seeing more prevalence of. And I think we've probably all heard about people trying to use COVID-19 also as a means, or you know, as a means to kind of fraudulently take money off people and things like that. So I suppose my question is around, is this increase in part down to COVID-19 or is it something that was already happening, you know, in terms of, in terms of what people are trying to do? And also, in terms of COVID-19, is in the lockdown and all that, is there other issues around, you know, what help other organisations are able to give? Because I know, in the past, I've certainly been at community meetings where the local, you know, local community sergeant or other officers have been given presentations around issues around fraud and how to detect fraud and how, you know, and I know those sort of presentations don't get to everybody, but you know, I think that sort of thing hasn't been happening. And I wonder also, is there more the council could do in terms of, you know, working with you through trading standards? And also, are there things that organisations like, you know, financial institutions could do to, and you know, and maybe mobile phone companies? I'm just reflecting on the kind of things I see in my email inbox and people giving me offers that seem far too good to be true, or indeed telling me that I need to pay the money or my phone will get cut off and things like that. That, you know, are there things that, that organisations like, you know, like banks or mobile phone companies could do to make it clearer to folk that, you know, they're never going to get a threatening, you know, they're never going to really get a threatening email from their, from their bank or their mobile phone company telling them they need to pay up immediately sort of thing. So is there more that can be done? And what is the impact of COVID-19 being on that? Thanks.
Thank you, councillor. I'll bring Ross in at the end, just to perhaps give an overview of some of the activity his staff and colleagues within our prevention hub have been doing under the COVID-19 restrictions to continue to try and prevent the crime from occurring. Just before I do that, I just want to touch on fraud in general. The increase in numbers makes it difficult, again, going back to compare and contrast, but I wouldn't be diverted by it. Because these frauds were happening, the issue we have is that crimes are recorded, generally speaking, where they are committed. And it can sometimes be difficult to get your head around the fact that because the victim lives in Dundee and the money is lost in Dundee, the crime's committed in Dundee, cyber-enabled crimes are committed all over the world. So what that's meant this year is that where the victim is located is where we will record the crime, because it's a more accurate reflection of the scale of the problem. But in all other crimes and instances, it's actually where the crime is committed is the person sitting behind their computer in their basement somewhere other part of the world. But the important point for us is that these victims were already here within our community. So it's not an increase in fraud as a consequence, it's a better understanding. So I wouldn't get focused on how we're counting them, but it provides some context to seeing the increasing numbers. Fraud itself, we've seen a continual increase in that area, particularly cyber-enabled fraud. So fraud that's enabled over the internet as opposed to your bogus worker type and a piece that goes on. So we've seen, we have seen an increase there. Those groups are adaptable. The volume of their activity is just phenomenal amount of, and they don't need many people to fall prey to make their campaign a success. So what we have seen is obviously COVID-19 presents new opportunities. We knew that as soon as vaccines were starting, people would be getting emails saying, click on this link and book your, book your vaccine. And here's, you need to pay your £10 and give us your PIN number at the same time, you know, that type of activity. It's very easy to foresee that that would happen. So we do what we can nationally as well as locally to mitigate against that. In regards to the inquiries themselves, we still, we don't give up hope in detecting these. Clearly, the increase in numbers as a consequence of how we report them has shown a decrease in detections. But 22.7%, if I recall correctly, are detected within Dundee. That's nearly one in five frauds are detected. I think that's a remarkable achievement, given how many of these will actually be perpetrated abroad. The challenge we have with the foreign-based actors or accused committing these crimes is there's real challenges with jurisdiction, there's real challenges with actually progressing inquiries and such like. It's not to say that we don't, we have an international unit. Scotland has significant success of hunting down and bringing back criminals who commit crimes in our country, be them abroad or otherwise. The challenge we have is a local policing division, though, is how much effort and energy is justified in that space compared to actually, if you'll excuse the phrase, target hardening the victims, stop them becoming victims in the first place and allow them the space to actually live their lives without that fear. My issue with the frauds occurring is that it can impact negatively on people's wellbeing and their actual confidence, how confident are they to engage in the wider society on the internet in ways that we just accept as normal potentially. So it's really important for me that we continue to prevent those whilst doing what we can locally and nationally to chase down the offenders when they actually commit the crimes. You spoke, councillor, of what more we can do through partnership. The relationship between us and Trading Standards has never been stronger, particularly through the COVID-19 period, has really cemented that personal relationships that we have, as well as the professional work that we do together, that will only go from strength to strength. We also have significant support from the banking sector. We have a banking protocol where if the banks feel that something's not right, you know, perhaps an elderly customer comes in and asks to withdraw their life savings in cash, they'll phone us and we'll make some inquiry as to what's the providence of this, what's the, what are they trying to do with that money? And to make sure, to try and protect them as much as we can. So that's quite a formal protocol that's been in place for a while now, and it works very well. And we've had some real significant success out of that. And I think it's an excellent piece of work by the banks to try and protect their customers from potentially being defrauded from their life savings, from which it's very difficult to recover. In regards to what we've done locally, clearly, we would have done a lot of work previously, actually in person. So we would attend some particularly vulnerable groups, perhaps old folks homes, perhaps some of the schools and such like, and do some one-on-one engagement. Clearly, that is just not possible. So we've had to be more innovative about how we've done that work. And it can't all be online. We can't do it all in a virtual space. We still need to do some work as much as we can, as close to the people that could be affected by it. So I'll ask Ross just to maybe give a flavour of the type of activity that we've been doing in response to preventing fraud as opposed to the actual investigations once they are committed. Ross?
Yeah, just coming in on that. So I suppose, just to touch on the COVID bit, for me, I think the other aspect around COVID that potentially drives up frauds is that we are seeing a lot of people coming to online communities for the first time during the COVID period, whether that be to kind of use online banking in times before when they maybe would have attended their own branch, or perhaps more importantly, that kind of social media aspect where people are reaching out for support, but can't do that in person as they would have done traditionally. So I think there is a new market of potential victims there, if I'm being honest, who are coming to online services for the first time and are perhaps not as well educated in how to protect themselves and secure accounts and things that perhaps they could be. So there is definitely a piece of work on the go there, predominantly based around our community sergeants and community teams in order to kind of just get out those messages around how to secure your online kind of portfolio, make sure you're as safe as possible when you're online as you possibly can be. And the other aspects for me as well are that when those crimes are committed online, effectively, what the offenders are doing is stripping away people's support networks, because these crimes are essentially invisible. So it's not like a physical assault where there is injuries that people can pick up on. But when things happen online, clearly, support people, so people who are there to support victims don't necessarily know what's happening until it's too late. And once it has happened, there is that sense of embarrassment, which makes it much more difficult for people to reach out and ask for help. So a lot of our work is around using the kind of reporting of that initial crime as a catalyst to bring around that kind of group of support around the victim, target harden them through education and bringing in family members to make sure that there are no repeat offending, which is a really important step for us. And amongst all of that is that continued contact with kind of third sector agencies, which are in and out of people's homes, and just making those links online and by phone as best we can to ensure that we can get through the COVID period in as best a way as possible before we can reintroduce that face-to-face education and contact to be had before.
Okay. And if I could just bring in Mrs. Verlaine, please, from a partnership point of view?
Thank you very much, Deputy Convenor. Just to confirm what Divisional Commander said about the good working relationship between ourselves, Trading Standards and Police Scotland, the relationship has never been stronger. And these are challenging times. One of the latest discussions we've been having is around the Mass Vaccination Centre, where we have a number of people from the city going through that centre and whether or not we can use that as a mechanism to reach out and advise and give information out to individuals potentially around the issues of fraud. So that's a discussion that's ongoing at the moment with our colleagues in Police Scotland to see if we can use as many of these opportunities as possible to get those messages out to individuals to prevent them being taken advantage of. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, Bailey Keenan, please.
Yeah, the questions around domestic abuse and the figures in the report are nothing for Dundee to be proud of. You know, the figures are more than double the Scottish average. And you know, it's something that perhaps we as a city need to take on board and address and do something a bit wider through the Dundee Partnership to try to address the issues that fall out from domestic abuse. But I'm wondering whether the police have any indications as to whether the growing numbers grow different trends? And as to whether they've got any views on how a wider partnership review of this could be, do something that would address it? We've been bold in the past and we've taken on things like the Fairness Commission and the Drugs Commission to look at really serious issues that are affecting people in the city. And this is a serious issue that we need to address. We can't go on just sort of thinking that, you know, 5.26% and the 10,000 that's in the report is anyway something to be proud of in Dundee. It's quite shameful. And I would like to see if there was something, perhaps the police could make comment, or even wider officers of council can make a comment as to how best we can go about addressing the problem, whether we need to have a drains up and look at the thing more in depth so as that we have a better understanding of the problems. But it's quality of life for people, you know, and I think it's something that we as a city should tackle.
Thank you, councillor Keenan. You'll get absolutely no argument from me that it's an unacceptable number. I do reflect on it since the day I arrived nearly six years ago in Tayside and the volume. However, as I mentioned previously, the city has a problem with violence. And I think we need to also consider it in the wider context of we have a problem with violence within our city, where people revert to the use of force far too quickly. That said, domestic abuse carries with a particular and significant challenge. It's a known truth that victims will not come forward the first time they're a victim. They may have been the victim numerous times before they come forward to services, be that the police or colleagues in other services, such as violence against women or such like, and women's aid. So we need to recognise this is an under-reported crime. It's a known truth that it's an under-reported crime. We also, we recognise that an increase in the numbers of crimes reported are a reflection of the confidence of the victims to come forward. And I think that's an entirely healthy assessment to hold. However, it gives you an indication of the volume of crimes that we're dealing with. And that is not, that's an inescapable truth, that these numbers are so much higher than the rest of the country. So we absolutely have a real challenge in this area. Obviously, sits in the city plan as a strategic objective for our city to try and reduce. And the chief executive and I, through the chief officer group that we both sit on for public protection, discuss this regularly and what more we can do across the entire partnership, not just within an enforcement piece or within a support piece, but actually as a collective, what is it that we can do in this space? I don't have a single answer, councillor, but I would certainly reflect very closely on the appetite of committee to perhaps, as you refer to, have a drains up review and just let's have a proper look and see, is our approach to this delivering the return that we want to see, which is simply less victims? And the honest answer is that we continue to record more and more of these crimes. And I'm not sure that that is the direction of travel that we should be comfortable with.
Convenor, perhaps maybe some other officers want to make a comment as well. But the other aspect though is I'm wondering whether there is a great deal of reporting in relation to the mental abuse that could be happening in a domestic situation, or as to whether that is something that, you know, doesn't even get close to being in these figures just yet?
Excellent. I can certainly come back on that. Yes, it does. It includes all, it's not just violence. It's all coercive behaviour, there's specific legislation now which covers a lot of that behaviour for those real difficult, challenging reasons that we've known about historically, where proving some of the abuse was difficult because of its sustained activity over a period of time. So it does include all of those. What it doesn't include is third-party reporting by victims. So victims reporting to the perhaps other agencies, absolutely adamant they don't want the police involved. And if we have a victim-centred approach, we must accept that because it's about protecting and looking after the victim. But those won't be the majority. We do have a number of tools available to us. We set as a domestic abuse forum, so we have a multi-agency forum involving third sector as well as policing, local authority, where we assess our most prolific offenders, our most prolific victims. We can obviously push out the duty to ask and the duty to tell. So we can notify people, if it's appropriate and proportionate, we can actually approach a potential victim and tell them that their new partner is a domestic abuse perpetrator and allow them to use that information to make their own life choices. And then clearly follow that up with any safety plan that's required and such like. Those are used extensively and they're not used lightly, they need to be, but they are enshrined in legislation. We have the authority to do that. So there are many, many activities going on in the background across the public sector in this area. But yet, the numbers continue to increase.
I'm glad to see your hand went up, because I was going to ask Mrs. Verlaine to come in again anyway, on the back of the briefing that I'd asked for, for all members of the committee. So maybe Elaine, you could elaborate on that, please?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Convenor. I mean, this is a critical area for the city. And, you know, it is something that the chief officer group has been focusing on recently, just in terms of making sure that there is as much partnership working going on as possible. And, you know, as you said, Deputy Convenor, this is an area that you've asked for a wider briefing for elected members on, from a partnership perspective. And that's something that we will take back and arrange. What I would like to say is that, you know, sometimes the figures will increase because women have more confidence in the system. So in that respect, that is a good thing, in that the women feel confident in the services that are being provided to support them. And that is important, that women feel supported. And in particular, some of the work that's been done, that we're doing at a service level, for example, within the housing service, the making a stand pledge and the changes that we've been making around the allocations policies and support for women, and also looking at housing first in relation to specific housing solutions for victims of domestic violence. These are all service improvements to make sure that we are collectively addressing this problem right across the council and across partnerships. But it's certainly a briefing that's been in process of being organised for elected members so that we can understand more in more detail about what's driving the figures behind domestic violence within the city. It's something that we need to step up and do more for.
And so there is a note from councillor Murray, and I was just going to also indicate about the new website does incorporate an area where there is non-gendered violence help and support as well. If you could just clarify that, please, Elaine?
Absolutely. That is correct, Deputy Convenor. You know, it's right across the spectrum that that support is provided. Absolutely.
Thank you. And just as an aside, as a member of Dundee Pride Board, I asked them if they would look at it and feedback their point of view with regards to it from that lived experience point of view. Mr. Todd, if you'd like to come in again, please?
Thank you. Sorry, one other element I was going to add is that obviously, we've, one of our investigative strategies in regards to victims when they come forward to evidence and the crimes is that we will, if evidence justifies it, potentially go through previous relationships, obviously with the consent and understanding of the victim. And what we often find is that one report to us can result in numerous years' worth of offending against that victim, all of which all of which mutually corroborates their version of events and allows us to present to the court. But what that means is we see an exponential increase in the volume of crimes recorded because we are going back in history to, to evidence those. And that, that's exactly the same as we do with sexual crime. And it's entirely appropriate and proportionate to do that, to make sure that we, we respond to these properly. But it's just to give a bit of context to the overall numbers.
Can we, can I just ask one more? Would, would, would it be fair to say that historic crimes would be hitting the sort of Scottish average as much as it would be hitting Dundee's? Because I mean, the figure for me is the alarming one that Dundee is more than double the Scottish average. So as, you know, are people confident to report elsewhere in Scotland or if we just, we're doing marvellous? You know, the fact that we've got these numbers out there, but as much as we need to do something to address it.
Councillor, for me, I think your instincts are absolutely right. It's still not an acceptable number and I wouldn't seek, I wouldn't seek to defend it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I believe that that's all of the questions now. So if we could move on, please.
Yes, thanks very much, Deputy convener. Having been noted, item four, antisocial behaviour, October to December, report. This is for noting.
Okay, now can I please bring in Bailey Wright?
Thank you, convener. Obviously, I would like to welcome this, this report, especially the appendixes, which really breaks down all of the categories by wards. And then appendix one, for the very first time, lets us see exactly what's going on in our wards. Appendix two helpfully shows the actions that have been taken. And one of my questions is, will this report be a monthly or a bi-monthly report? And do you have any thoughts on how we can carry out some sort of analysis into why this behaviour is happening? And I'll give you an example. If it was noise nuisance, which is the biggest problem on the chart, could we think about a solution and come up back and come back with some recommendations? And a solution for this problem could be, for example, again, include an analysis of the viability of putting soundproofing or deafening in the houses. Perhaps it's now is a good time to make that type of investment. But it would also be helpful if we could break down this information further by streets and at least the three worst areas which are Lochie, Clappington and East End. And would this help us to focus more closely and accurately on the areas where we can improve the lives of some of our tenants whose lives really have been devastated by antisocial behaviour? And some who would never ever have been dreaming about moving house, but have had to to get some peace and quiet and a better quality of life. And just to get away from the, from the problems. And that's all because of the problems that they're, that they've had with antisocial behaviour neighbour. And for some people and some of the cases I've had, it's been life-changing and devastating for these people. And I think we should be doing more to help them. I think the report makes a good start, but we must now look to see how we can improve. Not only to give more information, but to give us essential knowledge of the issues to enable us to identify and apply effective solutions that are so badly needed and, and antisocial behaviour. But I really, I love this report. I think it's great. And I'm looking forward to it being expanded in, in some way.
Okay, thank you, Bailey Wright. And I'll feed back to the officers that you do enjoy the report because I quite enjoy it as well, getting into that little detail. And Mrs Worley, are you coming in on this one?
And thank you, Deputy convener. I'm happy to look at what further breakdown we, we can provide and, and report that back to Bailey Wright. And I can't see at this point in time just how much information we can break it down to. But I'm more than happy to have a look at that and come back and provide as much information as I can to, to committee. In, in relation to solutions, soundproofing is, is a solution that we have tried in, in the past and has had some success. It is hampered by the fact that, you know, with, with mixed tenure, it's not always straightforward to be able to deliver that solution. And certainly if it's in the, the private sector, it's more, more challenging to deliver that solution. So, but I'm happy to bring back more information around what we do in response to tackling noise nuisance complaints to committee.
I'm, I'm pleased to hear that, Elaine, because I think it must be one of certainly things that I do as far as my constituents are concerned, is counsel them on antisocial behaviour. And looking at the, the police, we had the debate with the police earlier on. I don't know, is there a chance to perhaps put in if there has been police involvement in these? Maybe that's something you could add on as well.
Yeah, that was interesting.
I'm happy to look at that and, and come back on that matter.
Okay, thank you.
And so actually a conversation that Ross and I had this afternoon, that we should be very careful not to bundle things into antisocial behaviour if it's actually criminal. So that would perhaps allow that to be separated as well. And next is councillor Rendell, please.
Thank you, convener. Yeah, mine was around the, the noise nuisance antisocial behaviour, which is by far the highest complaint that we have in, in all the different wards. And I just wondered, in the, the report, it's got the, the bit about the additional update. And the team have been able to recommence deployment of sound recording equipment, which obviously wasn't possible at some of the points during the pandemic. I just wonder, the sound equipment itself, are we quite happy because of the level of complaints that we see here? Are we happy that we've got enough equipment to be able to cope with the level of complaints, first of all? That was my first question. And is it of the correct state of the art quality, as it were, to be able to record, you know, the sounds that people are complaining about? Because there's a term that's been in the press this week called misfonia, which is about how people can suffer from really noise that actually sends them, you know, crazy, really. And, and one person's lullaby is somebody else's, you know, jet engine. So the complaints that I've had in the past, you know, a number of people have said to me, but the sound recording equipment doesn't collect, you know, the proper level of sound. And I know we have to measure decibels, et cetera. So my question was really just around, are we happy that we've got the right amount of sound equipment and that it's of the right standard, really?
Deputy convener, can I bring Tom Sterling in just to, to pick up that point in terms of the, the operational detail that councillor Rendell has asked?
Yes, please. If you'd like to come in, please, Mr Sterling.
Thank you. In terms of the equipment we use, I wouldn't say necessarily state of the art, but it is fit for purpose in terms of what the antisocial behaviour team need. Could always look at, and sometimes there is, you know, people do have to wait until, until equipment's available if it's all, it's all deployed. So that's something we can certainly look at. Obviously, part of the, part of the process is then to analyse that information. So, you know, that staff have to then look at, listen to that information and try and interpret it and make sense of it. But the team's very skilled in doing that and then making the right judgements in terms of what the right course of action would be in relation to the information that they gather.
Okay, thank you for that. I, I just, I would be concerned that, as I say, the level of complaints in that area has gone up. And just make sure that we've got the right amount of equipment to cope with and the people don't have to wait a very, very long time to get their equipment into their house. Thank you.
Can I now bring in councillor Malone, please?
Thank you, convener. My question is kind of similar to what Bailey Wright mentioned earlier on about trying to understand what the concentration effect is and the areas of concentration effect, just from my own experience of dealing with many, many cases of antisocial behaviour, particularly when they're sound related. It tends to be tenemented buildings and it tends to be aged stock. So I think that having an understanding of that concentration effect, we might be able to channel resources in the specific areas and specific types of housing. My kind of more substantive question was around the allocation of antisocial behaviour points to people who are looking to move from a premises. And I asked a question of officers and I appreciate David Simpson's kind of response that it is very, very difficult at this time to kind of detach of the, the information, get the information out quite, quite easily. But I think what we've got is every time a person gets awarded antisocial behaviour points to help them move from a premises, that is a failure because what we're saying de facto is that that person is suffering from antisocial behaviour. And I just don't get a sense that we've got enough intelligence around this area to try and work out where the balance lies in terms of supporting the people who are suffering antisocial behaviour. I'm sure it's there and I may have been in touch with the antisocial behaviour team just last week and they do a fantastic job. But I just think that when residents and tenants and constituents are contacting me to say, I've been awarded antisocial behaviour points, I'm desperate to leave some, a place I've lived in for 20 years. That there's something that's unbalanced, not quite correct. So I think maybe having that information, if there's an easy way of getting that information, I think it would be helpful to all of us to understand and maybe develop a strategy around antisocial behaviour, which is much more about supporting the victim rather than just allocating antisocial behaviour points. I appreciate it's really difficult. I don't want that necessarily come back in. I report in the future, but if it's something we can look at finding an easier way of collating that information, I think it would be helpful for us all going forward strategically on, on the issue of antisocial behaviour.
Deputy convener, I'm, I'm happy to bring David Simpson in, in a moment, but just to say, to reassure councillor Malone that, you know, our, our absolute preference is to resolve the issue without people having to move. And so, and, and also to support the victim through that process because it can take some time in order to resolve. So I would just like to reassure you that that is our, our first and foremost is, is trying to, to support the person to remain within their home and only where that becomes intolerable and are unacceptable for the individual, that, that we would look at a possible sort of management transfer approach to that. And I'm happy to bring Mr Simpson in just to give a little bit more detail to the, the allocations process.
Sorry, David, we can't hear you.
Sorry, rookie mistake. Yeah. So for the benefit of everyone on the call, the points that are being referred to by councillor Malone are actually social need points. So they reflect a range of social needs, one of which is ongoing antisocial behaviour problems. So I have been, as, as councillor Malone has accurately said, it's, it's not the touch of a button that I can get those figures. But given that it's been raised again, I will go off and make inquiries through IT about extracting that from the allocation IT system. What I need to do is to narrow down on the search we're looking for, which is number of people, and I think councillor Malone, when he asked me the question, was about in his ward to have been allocated, what he referred to as antisocial behaviour points. So I can try and do that search on that one ward at the minute, if, if people would bear with me. And I'll try and see what that shows. Then I'll have a discussion with councillor Malone if that's helpful.
I, I, I think that's really helpful, convener. I appreciate David's contribution on this. I realise how difficult it is because you've got to break down between what is antisocial behaviour and what's other aspects of it. But if it's, I, I think it, just for our understanding, I think it's important, given that for me it's probably the biggest item in, in my email tray. And I just think it'd be helpful going forward. I really, really don't want to add too much to officers' work already. I know how difficult things are at the moment, but if there's an easy way that can be found, that I'm actually looking for an easy way that can be found rather than necessarily requiring that data tomorrow or within a short space of time. Is there an easier way that we could break down the, we could record the incidents, which allows that then to become more readily identifiable? But I really don't want to give officers any more work to understand. David's points in his reply to me were very, very kind of correct. But I just, it's, it's how we go back and tell the people who are victims of antisocial behaviour that there is a strategy out there to try and deal with this. And I appreciate officers' comments about remediate. There's a lot of tools there that can be used rather than the tool of last resort. But I mean, I've had a constituent in the last two weeks, absolutely hysterically in tears, talking to me about the experiences she's having of antisocial behaviour and want to know what we are doing about it. So anything that you could do, David, to kind of, to help us understand the situation more, would be really appreciated. Thank you.
And again, I suppose it's that fine line, is antisocial behaviour or is it criminal behaviour? And that's a, a question, I guess, that you always have to, to ask as well. And can I now bring in councillor McCarvin?
Thanks, Chair. I suppose it takes me back to, to item three, the police report as well as this one antisocial behaviour report. For example, if you look at the first diagram, you have disturbance due to drugs. An issue, antisocial behaviour, definitely. And there was a drug concern in the police report. But reading both, I, I don't know where the problem is and, and the factors and the information behind it. So for, have a joined up approach where no drugs is an issue, antisocial behaviour, where no drugs is an issue with crime. But sitting here in a committee, we don't know exactly where it is. I could guess it's in Lochie, Coleside and East End. But I don't know. So I think that's why, that was my plea in item three, to get a more meaningful narrative about the issues behind it. And my plea is for this one as well. And Bailey Wright and councillor Malone's touched on these issues as well. And from my comment, Chair, I've probably got a question for council officers just to get confirmation. Obviously, we work in partnership with Police Scotland. So is the information readily available for council officers? And when we're looking at the likes of hotspot analysis and location of problems? Is that information readily available to council officers to inform this report?
Deputy convener, just to reassure councillor McCarvin that we do work really, really closely with Police Scotland. And indeed, you know, we've had recent successes in the location of drug dealing within the city through working with Police Scotland, through our Safety and Alarm Response Centre and through our community ward. And so there is a, a lot of joint working that goes on to identify hotspots and, and be able to, 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 to provide information that, that can lead to a conviction for, for Police Scotland. So there's a lot of close working that goes on already. But I'm happy to bring in either Mr Sterling or Mrs Mackenzie just to say a little bit more detail on the, the day-to-day discussions that go on between ourselves and Police Scotland to identify those hotspots.
Thanks, Elaine. I'll, I'll go first then and just, just confirm what you say. I mean, our antisocial behaviour team have regular, weekly, sometimes daily meetings where, where police colleagues around the issues. The SARC has been beneficial in, in assisting. In terms of looking at, I mean, cases are discussed on a, on a daily and weekly basis and officers will know where most of those issues are. And that forms part of the kind of, that partnership work and, and, and trying to, to deal with those issues. I don't know if Mr Mackenzie's got anything he wants to add.
Yes, if you'd like to come in, Mr Mackenzie.
Thank you, Deputy convener. Yes, maybe just add in supplement to what the director and head of service said that within the antisocial behaviour team, there is a dedicated drugs link officer as well. The importance of co-location of the teams, I think, is, is really high on priority and is working well and has worked well for a number of years. But I think the dedication of an officer towards those issues has paid dividends in conjunction with the linking up of imagery that the SARC can report to the police and on to the drugs, drugs link officer as well.
Thank you. And I believe Mr Todd would like to come in as well.
Thank you. Yeah, I just feel it's appropriate for me just to lend my, my voice as well to what Elaine and Tom have said there around our, our interactions as services. We, we work together every single day. And drugs, massive priority for us, huge priority. You know, we're very much focused on, you know, more than a person a week dies in our city as a consequence of drugs. The vulnerability and exploitation that falls from that activity is huge for us. And absolutely, we can't deal with that as a single service. We wouldn't even begin to think that we could. So whilst we might hold a monopoly on arresting and charging people when it comes to that vulnerability and exploitation, including the people trafficking element that goes along with that, prostitution that can go along with it, and obviously to an extent, some of the violence as well. We need others to help and support us with that. So we, we speak every single day. But what we don't do is focus on one particular issue. We focus on the wider range that what does the impact of drugs in that tenement, that location? That what is, what is the effect of that? And it will be to an extent antisocial behaviour. It could be an overdose that's non-fatal. It could be an exit, somebody being trafficked in there to deal drugs from another part of the country. So a huge amount of issues that we just absolutely speak to each other and discuss and agree what it is we need to do to try and keep our communities safe as possible. And ultimately, whilst we do want to reduce the number of drugs deaths, we've got a lot we can do right now around a lot of the vulnerable people that are contained within these homes. And then the spill-off effect to others is potentially antisocial behaviour. But if I can be bold, that would be a secondary interest to us if we can sort out the human trafficking element. But what I'm trying to explain to councillors is it's such a complex issue for us. We can't do this alone. None of us can. And we are absolutely intrinsically linked in our service provision.
Thank you. And I guess it's fairly obvious from looking at the wards of Cold Side and Locky that they have predominantly similarities in that they both have multi-story accommodation. And there was recently a pilot in the ones in the Hilltown. So I just wondered if they could have some feedback on that and whether that will progress to cover all the multi-story accommodation in the city.
Chair, can I just, can I just add for closure for myself? So I was aware that there was a great relationship, a working partnership. We've heard that it's been reinforced tonight. For me, for this report, moving forward, are we going to have more detail regards to antisocial behaviour types? I.e. location and other things within this report moving forward?
I think you would get the locality stuff from your LCPP and your relationships there, but I'll leave that to the officers to come in on.
I think I did commit to going away and looking at what information is available to us and to report back to elected members once we've had a chance to look at the information that can be collated.
Thank you for confirming. So yeah, going back to the pilot that happened in the Hilltown and how that progressed, please.
I'll take that. Don't mind Elaine. I mean, I'll ask Ross to just cover some of the detail, but a clear element of that was to reduce antisocial behaviour and was to increase the confidence of the tenants within those multis to report matters to us. So yeah, a lot of work being done there, being a success so far, but much more to do. So I'll ask Ross maybe just to cover some of the challenges of that operation and what we might try and do collectively going forward to roll it out into other areas sustainably.
Yeah, sorry, just to come in on that then. So there is, there is a wee bit of analysis that's been completed at the end of a kind of three-month period around that pilot. And as a result of the kind of proactive patrols and the kind of joined up working that was done around the Hilltown multis particularly, we did see a drop of about 99 incidents in comparison to the period the previous year, which is a significant reduction in demand. And I would suggest that probably demand has still been there, but actually what's happened is the demand has been reported in person due to those kind of high visibility patrols that have been there to engage with people and face to face and at the time that those incidents were previously occurring. So a lot of positivity coming out of the project, predominantly driven by that extra contact and extra reassurance that comes from those extra kind of food patrols and contact with the police in there. And also kind of demonstrating to people that services are joined up and we are talking to each other so that there's no kind of working in silos around the variety of problems that we uncover when speaking to people in those areas. There is no two ways about it, sustaining that approach is time-consuming and it's demanding in terms of resource. So we be careful that we don't overstretch ourselves in terms of the proactive stance and we can retain our resilience around treble nine calls and response. So there is a balance there that we need to kind of find the correct place around all of that. But what I would say is around the directed policing plan that's in place particularly for Locky already, there are a number of aspects of that kind of project in the Hilltown that are already in place, albeit they've not been kind of easily joined into a project. So high visibility patrols happen. The analysis of the kind of times of day when most antisocial behaviour occurring is definitely in place. And we're targeting our resources to the priorities that people tell us are really important to them. So aspects of the project are already underway. There is a wee bit of further analysis to be done in terms of making sure that our resources can meet the demands around extending that project across the city. But definitely exciting returns that we are keen to kind of take the learning from and kind of use in other areas of the time.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And with that, thank you for staying on. And is this report agreed? By silence? That's this committee finished. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Short. The next committee is the Neighbourhood Services Committee.
Thank you, Mr Menne, and good evening, everyone. Mr Waddell, would you like to take us through the light agenda?
Yes, thanks very much, convener. Firstly, are there any declarations of interest? Yeah, there have been no declarations, these are on to item two, which is a contract for the treatment of mixed metals and also lead acid batteries. Committees asked to agree to accept the offer as recommended.
So this is a specialist area and we only received one bid to invitation to tender, which was from the incumbent, which is Robertson's Metals Recycling. I'd like to commend to committee the fact that we continue to be able to recycle these metals because it is a specialist area and that the successful bidder is located in Dundee, thus keeping the work within the city. Any questions for officers? No, not seeing any questions. So can this tender be agreed? Okay, thank you, Mr Waddell.
Yeah, thanks again, convener. Item three is tenders received and committees asked to agree to accept offers as recommended.
So this is for various works to be carried out, as you can see from the tenders. Just like to draw attention to one of the items, which is the creation of a car park within the site of what were some old lockups now demolished. And that will now create 20 car parking spaces in this area and two EV charging points at the site at Deveron Terrace. Any questions to committee or comments? Let me see, I have councillor Mara, please.
Thanks, convener. And I have emailed the director of executive director regarding this proposal. I think it's very welcome. It's been welcomed by residents in the surrounding area. But there are some questions, I think, about ancillary works around the car park relating to kind of blockages on the pavements and other environmental upgrades that could be part of the same scheme. So I'm just looking to say, looking to welcome the proposal. I think generally speaking, people locally think it's a good thing, but there are some extra works that could really improve the scheme if we could have a meeting on that. I think that'd be much appreciated.
Mr Boyle, are you on the call? Would you like to come in on that?
Yes, convener. Thanks very much. I'd be happy to go away and look at that and get back to councillor Mara.
Thank you very much.
Mrs Verlaine, were you wanting to come in or are you okay? Just to confirm that we're happy to sit down with councillor Mara and look at those issues with her. Okay, thank you. So with that, I'm not seeing any other questions or comments. Can this be agreed, please? Okay. Thank you. I think that is the committee.
Thank you, councillor Rendall. The final committee this evening is the Policy and Resources Committee.
Good evening, everyone. Can I thank councillor Rendall for her brevity? And neighbourhood services committee will move on with what is quite a meaty agenda. I'll just move straight on to the business.
Item one is declaration of interest. Does any member have any declarations to make?
I think I'll take the obvious as given. So myself and Kevin Keenan are members of the ADP. I think that should probably be declared in reference to point three. But over and above that, I see no other contributions. So we'll move on. Oh, sorry.
Councillor Lynn, I'm a member of the Drugs Commission, as is councillor Keenan for that matter.
Thank you both. We'll make sure those are noted. Okay, Tracy.
Right, so that then takes us on to item two, the Tayside Mental Health and Wellbeing Strategy. And you have a report before you.
Thanks very much for that. Clearly, this is a really important body of work that's been undertaken. And I know that an extensive briefing was carried out in which many elected members were able to attend, participate and provide their thoughts and views on the mental health strategy itself. Now, can I thank and welcome, first of all, Kate Bell, who's the interim director of mental health, who's joining us this evening. And I'm just going to pass over to Kate in a few moments to give a brief introduction. We also have Lynda Graham, who's the clinical lead. And of course, those from IGB, including Arlene Mitchell, who's the locality manager within IGB, to answer any questions that you might have. But Kate, can I thank you for coming along today? I felt like it was quite important to have the voice of those that were taking forward this work. And if I can just hand over to provide a short introduction, thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Alexander. I am here with the local team, as you've said. We had a comprehensive presentation before, so I know we have a busy meeting tonight. Just in terms of the overview, the mental health and wellbeing strategy for Tayside, as you know, commenced in March 2020, went through a comprehensive engagement process of the organisations from Dundee, and Anglia. It takes us through to October when we had a draft mental health and wellbeing strategy. At that point, we put the first draft out for further engagement. Went through seven or eight weeks of quite significant feedback from a variety of different organisations, just to ensure that we had those improvements into the strategy that people wanted to see over the next and indeed beyond that, to improve mental health services. I don't intend to go into the background of the independent inquiry and our listening and change action plan, but happy to take any questions on any of that. I'm really welcome the opportunity to come and speak to the the delivery of the strategy and the implementation of the strategy really requires that whole systems approach. If we think about what scale and scope the strategy has, it's pre-birth to old age. It's a population-wide strategy, therefore it takes an all. And I think if we all know, understand mental health, that mental health is a public health issue and not just a NHS, you know, issue to resolve. We've had lots of different committees in terms of the intentions to take those strategic priorities forward, presented to the three innovation joint boards in December and to the NHST side board, where the strategy priorities were approved in terms of the direction of trust. In terms of the strategy itself, it would be useful to have a conversation with the committee in relation to some of the more socially wider issues that are in the strategy around poverty, isolation, unemployment, some of the things that are really challenging individuals. Get into discussion about NHS mental health services as the interim. But the intention of the strategy is to make improvements across the board, but in its entirety for people with lived experience of mental health conditions. As we've gone through the last year of COVID, the impacts, you know, has been seen on wider communities and wider individuals, least young people. So I think it is, if you've been able to have a look at the strategy itself and the summary document presented to you, you'll be able to see the intentions in there is to make an impact across all of those age groups, all of those age groups. And indeed to enter into discussions about multi-agency. I'll stop there because I mean, I think most of the questions will come from the members and I don't want to take up too much of your time presenting that.
Thanks very much, Kate. It might well be the case that we asked a significant amount of questions during those briefings, so you might not have that many. But thank you again for coming along tonight. It's really appreciated and I think it's really valuable for you to be able to come along to the council meeting to contribute to that and answer any questions as well. So just to open it up, I know Bailey Keenan, you have an amendment which I'll ask you to speak to in just a moment, but I'll just give anybody else the opportunity who might have a question to come in just before we go to that. Kate, you're getting off very lightly today. Oh, no, you're not. Councillor Mara, can I let you come in, please?
Thanks, convener. And thanks, Kate, for that introduction and for the briefings that you've given to us. You're recognizing the introduction to your own introduction, I think, to this strategy, that it's a lengthy document and I think comprehensive. And I think we all would welcome much of the content that is here. I suppose my, but you've recognized indeed that part of the challenge, I think, is about communicating the strategy to the population in terms of, I would say, what service they should be able to expect, what they, and also, and I recognize that probably touches most directly in terms of acute services and the services that people might have access to. But also to people working in services in terms of to what kind of services that they should be providing. I think too often we have these lengthy documents, you know, running to a couple of hundred pages, which are rightly comprehensive and deal with it. But is there going to be work undertaken to make sure that there can be some form of charter or some form of guarantee that explains to people what their rights are, what services that they can expect to receive, how long they should wait to access, be able to access those services and what actions that the people who are involved in delivering those, what they can rightly be expected for them in terms of the support as they're given them. It feels to me that in order to make this a useful document for the public, we need something that actually distills it into that promise to the people of Tayside as to what they, what they can expect. And so I just wonder if that's a step that you would be able to take in the coming weeks.
Thanks. Michael, Kate?
Yeah, happy to take that on board, councillor Mara. I think the document is comprehensive, you're right, because it needs to be. Mental health services in Tayside had a lot to say in terms of where they are now and where they need to go to. So in terms of the scope and the scale for the strategy, the six large-scale projects that are in there are the priorities for mental health across Tayside. And that goes from good mental health for all into primary care, into specialist services. It's been a priority set against community learning disabilities that will become a 24/7 learning disabilities approach and indeed to consider what we need to do for older people in relation to their mental health. Number of cross-cutting themes which look at workforce, which you have referred in terms of what type of staff that we need now and in future in terms of the new ways of working. And some of the team that are on the call just now will be able to talk to you more about that in terms of what needs to happen. And the, in relation to the delivery and implementation of the strategy, there are here for Tayside, you know, to look at further engagement, you know, with the population in relation to here's the strategy, here's what it's saying, what we need to set out for you, if it's a charter, you know, if it's a detailed, you know, summarized plan in relation to each of those six projects. What you have at the minute is a dedicated program management team around this. So we didn't just write the strategy. We started to think about what's the change program need to look like. So you've got what we call a program definition document, which sets out what will the strategy do and what does it need to do over the period of time. What this, the team are working on at the minute is year one priorities. Priorities should turn this game. That's a complex document. I get that. But that can be broken down, you know, in a number. One of the things that we've proven over the last year, I think, is that we can engage with people on all sorts of levels. Type forum, but there is a mental health and wellbeing, sorry, my computer, as you just say. Mental health and wellbeing website that's been set up that can take each element of the strategy and break it down. So therefore, where people have an interest, that's not, you know, considering those people who may be digitally excluded. So there's a number of ways that we can do that. So we're listening to people in terms of what they need to see. So therefore, the comprehensive nature of it is there, but it can be broken down in whatever way people want to be able to read that.
Thanks, Kate. Michael, you want to quick something?
Yeah, thanks, convener. Thanks for that response, Kate. I don't know if it's just my signal, but you're breaking up quite a lot while you're talking. So I'm only getting bits and pieces of your response. But I would, I would say that the, I think it's a well-meaning document, but we encounter mental health services as people who have to scrutinize policy from looking at this from a situation, I think, of crisis. You know, you don't have to look further than the coverage in the newspapers in Dundee in recent days, the number of people who've lost their lives to suicide. They, and to know and also speaking to whether it be social workers or people and working directly in the provision of mental health services in Tayside, that the pandemic is presenting an avalanche of demand in terms of mental health. that the pandemic is presenting an avalanche of demand in terms of mental health provision. So we had a previous situation that we knew that we had a crisis, that we had a variety of independent reviews that were reflecting on the conduct of our services, whether they were fit for purpose. And then we've followed that up with a situation where we've added the pandemic to that process. So I think what I'm taking from what you're saying is that there is a very generic and open kind of conversation about mental health services. But to me, there's an urgency in some of this about people's expectations. And I don't want to preempt my colleague Bailey Keenan in terms of some of what I know that he wants to say on this. I'll maybe come into it afterwards. But I would say that kind of longer term engagement process isn't really what I feel we need. You know, I mean, that can happen. But frankly, we need to get to a position where people know what their rights are and what they can expect here and now. And we've waited too long for that already. So that would be my response to what you'd say. But I appreciate that, Kevina. Thank you very much.
Thanks, councillor Mara.
Just give a short response to Michael there in terms of the urgent care and crisis project that sits within the overall programme has been ongoing now for six months. So that's a process whereby there'll be proposals made to what is urgent care and crisis care need to look like in mental health. So that's an immediate imminent change. About to start the mental health assessment look like and how do people get access to care as early. So that's just to give you an example of the work that is ongoing. It's not, you know, a part of a five-year plan, it's happening now. So there are high-impact changes part of the strategy. So there are various things at various levels in relation to the delivery of the strategy. And there are two major components that will have a good impact on mental health services in the short term. One is that urgent care and crisis pathway, the other is a review of mental health inpatient services that we need to look at from a wider perspective in Tayside to ensure that people can get access to those services, as you say, know what to expect and what will the quality serve. So those are two things that we're taking forward now and hopefully we'll have, you know, early papers to the board, hopefully by the end of March, to start to put those things in place.
Thanks, Kate. Apologies, councillor Duncan, I seem to have jumped over your question. So sorry about that. I'll come to you next.
Okay, is it me now?
It is indeed.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, John. Really good report. I mean, there's an awful lot in it. And I think, you know, that's actually acknowledged, there's a lot to get your head found. But then there's an awful lot of complex and quite challenging areas to look at. I'll just pick one of them. It's on page twenty-six and it's four point one headed the burden of disease. Give you a wee chance to have a look at that. But in summary, it says that Scotland has a comparatively high prevalence of suicide within the UK and that Dundee City has a particularly high prevalence within Scotland, primarily in men. That strikes me as something as a crisis. You know, and not just for the men, but for the women in the lives of these men who I would imagine would like them to remain with us. You know, what, can you give us some sort of insight, given that this is a huge report? And this is a question of urgency, it seems to me. What can we take away from this committee tonight in terms of how we're going to bear down on this problem?
Thanks, councillor Duncan. Kate, do you wish to come in on that? Or of course, we do have Linda and Arlene as well, if either of those would like to contribute.
So I think from the strategy point of view, and again, I'm in Lanarkshire and these guys are probably mostly in Dundee. So if we are breaking up, it's as a result of that. So what you see in the strategy is public health data, you know, in relation to what comes off of the information Scotland, from the data that is across Scotland and broken down into Dundee. And you're right, councillor Duncan, it is primarily young men between the age of sixty and twenty-four, and then again between the age of twenty-four and thirty-five in relation to that. But what the committee can take away and what is in the strategy, but what is in practice is that you have a multi-agency that looks at suicide prevention. And the three areas of Dundee, Perth and Ross and Angus, there is a suicide prevention coordination group that look at this and look at it on a regular basis. N H S T side consultants play into that. There is at the moment a review of, I think it's something like ten decides over a period of time to look at what happened on those occasions, what can be looked at in terms of what can be as we said at the top, in terms of the opening to this presentation.
Oh, that's that. Pressky Lanarkshire internet, Kate, I think. Okay, I think we've lost you a little bit. We can't really hear you. I do see that Arlene's got her hand up. So I'm going to bring Arlene in just now. Hopefully we can reconnect. So Arlene, can I bring you in?
Sorry.
No, I think we've lost it there. Arlene, can I maybe just bring you in to make a contribution at this point? And hopefully we can reconnect to Kate in a moment.
Yeah, thank you. Two or three comments I would like to make. I would like to go back to councillor Mara's question around can we have a charter, a list of expectation that people in Dundee might be able to expect in terms of levels of support? And I do think that that's something that we can work on with people with lived experience. I do also agree with Kate that I think our six main work streams from the strategy, it might be worth looking at that under those rather than overall. There's also to be more accessible versions of the strategy will follow. And I think they will be helpful in our discussions with people in Dundee. So that was one point. I think there are also a number of improvements that we've already started to make in Dundee. And I think that would be under the auspices of making sure that people get a quicker response, the right response more quickly in terms of mental health and wellbeing. Some of that we see through our primary care input. So mental health specialists within G P surgeries, two cluster areas out of four of that in place. And we're about to move to the third. On the point of suicide and the risk that we know there is for people when they, in the first few days that they come out of hospital, we've also developed a local discharge hub, which I think some of you are already aware of. And that recognises the need for a far more intense support for people when from a Dundee perspective, from when they come out of car view and to trying to support less likelihood of a readmission to hospital. We have, some of you are aware that we have an excellent third sector within Dundee City. And some of the work certainly through Covid has been quite remarkable in terms of virtual support, peer support for individuals, telephone lines. I was interested to read the Engage Dundee survey, which helps us learn a little bit more about people's experience through Covid and certainly gives us more pointers around our planning into the future around local community plans and also more focused mental health planning. I did think it would be helpful to ask Lynda Graham for a clinical perspective around some of the information that we see around suicide rates.
Yep, happy if Lynda wants to come in at that point.
Thank you. I'll happily come in on that. And the reflection that's made is an accurate one. We know we have an issue with high unexpected rates in Dundee, but we also know that there will be a crossover with the drug death issues we have in the city and the way that deaths are coded and also the effects that we've got of deprivation. None of which should take away from our absolute aspiration that this is something that we can impact on in a fairly significant way. Now, Arlene's already made reference to her learning from the Tayside Suicide Review Group. And the reason I think the group will be interested in that is that it allows us a real-time opportunity to respond to any emerging trends that we're seeing in the city. And a number of actions can be tagged to that sort of year on year. And I think that's something for the city as a whole to be proud of. If I can just comment more generally, I think our solution to our suicide rate in the city, in the same way that suicide is caused by multiple factors, there will be really a jigsaw of solutions to that. Some of that will be to do with our improved response to people experiencing distress. And I know that there's been a number of discussions prior to now about how we might do that better in the city. Distress brief interventions is something which you'll be pleased to see develop quite extensively within the next year. But the other major impact that we should be able to have is through the strategy and hopefully the improvement in mental health services you will see as part of that. Because we know that for those people where suicide is a result of an undertreated mental health problem, depression being the primary one, that the stronger we can make our care pathways and the more explicitly people understand what to expect from treatment and when to emphasise that they are not responding in the way that they perhaps could. That will mean that we can more assertively perhaps manage those mental health problems. So I think there's an array of things that we can be doing. But none of those are terribly quick fix. But that shouldn't stop us being cited on this in the short, medium and longer term.
Thanks for those contributions, Kate. Thanks for going out and coming back in. I hope and your signal's better this time. And I'll just move on to the next question, if that's all right, which is my colleague councillor Lynne. Ken?
Evening. Just on the complexity of the document, I understood there was to be an easy read published, which I think is really important, it's done as soon as possible due to the importance of the document. Any word on that? And I also wanted to ask about the fact that there's a great deal of emphasis in living life well on listening to the voices of those with lived experience, whether they're either in treatment or have been in treatment. And I'm wondering in terms of implementation, delivery, how we're going to go about this because it's so important.
Thank you, councillor. And I can answer in terms of the easy read, we have a summary document, which is twenty pages long, that goes with the strategy. There is also an easy read, which would be published this week along with a communication and engagement report. Both of those reports are just being completed by our comms and engagement group, will be approved by the comms engagement group hopefully this week. And the intention would be then to put them onto the website along with the other two documents as a suite of documents. So that again, people can access whatever they find, you know, most accessible to them. In relation to the implementation, it is important that to go back to say that we have listened to the voices of lived experience throughout the process. And it would be our intention to continue to do that. So all of the projects that have been set up to deliver and implement the strategy have people with lived experience as part of those groups.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Bailey MacPherson next.
Thanks, Kevina. I'm not going to, in a way, my substantive point is actually in a way being covered by the questions from councillor Mara and councillor Lynne. And that's really about easy language, language accessible for the public in relation to rights and expectations, but also an easy read of this, because to be blunt, this was not an easy read. And in places, if I'm being honest, it was a little bit repetitive, you know, it covered the same ground again. Now, that's not a criticism because this is a complex issue and I fully understand there are different partners you know, contributing to the overall outcome. So don't take that as a criticism, please. However, the one, no, I wasn't able to attend the briefing. My colleague councillor Duncan tells me it was very useful. So grateful for that. And perhaps this has been covered through the briefing. But I'm conscious of the fact that when I talk about information, if you like, more than once in the document, there's a governance chart which actually appears in two different forms, three times in the document, pages sixty-two, one forty-two, one sixty-one. And my, I found it quite difficult, it's quite impenetrable to really understand as he holds it up. How each of the, how it all fits together, really, to be honest. I know there's been an attempt in this to try to tell us. But I would really like, and I'm not expecting this tonight, but I think it would be very helpful for elected members to get a better understanding of the the governance, how the change programme governance actually all hold hands together. Because I found it a little bit difficult to get my head around that from, you know, I think there's been a genuine attempt to try, you know, I realise there are different, there's steering groups, there's subgroups, there's a whole, you know, there's a complex picture here. I get that. But I think as a member of Dundee City Council, knowing how it all fits together, I think would be extremely helpful and grateful if that could be taken on board.
Thanks.
Thank you, councillor MacPherson. That is something that we've been asked before. So we're working on a two, three-page document and no more. But if you look at the governance structure, it basically works bottom up in relation to the work streams feeding into the various project groups and the project groups into the programme board. And that's ensuring that we have listened to those voices and that we're able to take that programme governance into business as usual governance as well, which is why we want to speak to committees like this one in relation to proposals coming forward. The Tayside Executive Partners, which is representative of the four organisations, sits at the top of that as an oversight group, again, to ensure that strategic priorities meet the needs of those organisations to deliver for the population. But happy when we've got that three pager to share it with Arlene and Lynda and others, so that it can be shared with this committee.
That's extremely helpful and I'm grateful for that, Kate. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Kate, I see no other questions for you. We do have an amendment. So at this stage, can I just thank Kate, Lynda and Arlene for your contribution and for taking those questions? And I'm going to move on to the formal kind of stage at this point. So I'm going to hand over to Bailey Keenan, who has an amendment. And can I thank Bailey Keenan for circulating in advance because that was really helpful. And I'll just pass over to yourself.
Kevina, I think the motion itself is self-explanatory, is really looking to put a small team of people together, people with lived experience and a range of councillors to oversee the strategy and its implementation. I think it's an extremely important strategy for the city and it's probably something that we've sat around the table in various meetings to discuss how best we address mental health issues in the city. And, you know, we're here now, we've got a strategy and we've got someone to move forward for. You know, it's been a focus of three different reports. It said the Fairness Commission had real issues in relation to mental health. The Drugs Commission had real issues in relation to mental health. And the Strand Report obviously went obviously into mental health and detailed quite a number of changes that needed to be made. And I think it's really just looking for that level of work to be recognised and taken forward. And, you know, a few comments that we've heard this evening would suggest to me that, you know, things like emerging trends needing to be addressed, I suppose, and that it may well be very useful to have that level of councillors together so as the eases the way through various departments of council to make people's life in this city much better. So I would not say much more than that, other than to suggest that, you know, we adopt the motion or the amendment that I've put forward and, you know, welcome it. And let's get around the table together and try and make a difference, a real difference for the city. It's not a party political move that I'm trying to make here. It's about addressing issues that really affect citizens in Dundee.
Thanks, Bailey Keenan. That's really helpful. And I just ask at this stage, do you have a second, or? Councillor Mara?
Thanks, Kevina. Yeah, happy to second Bailey Keenan. Obviously in my question, I spoke a little bit, I think, about the the scale of this challenge and just picking up what Kevin's already mentioned there. I mean, it's an issue of huge importance, but frankly, it's only going to grow in importance in the coming months as we try and recover from the pandemic. You know, this is, is going to be, along with the economic problems that we're going to face, given the good news that we're hearing about vaccines, I think the men- given the good news that we're hearing about vaccines, I think the mental health challenges and the distress caused by the fallout of Covid, and also the economic challenges which will themselves bring further mental and emotional distress to people. We know this is going to be one of the major issues for the city over the coming years. And I think it's fair to say that elected members have found the processes around mental health issues frustrating. We have been promised reports at times that haven't been forthcoming. It was just a few months ago that we had, there was a to be a report from NHS Tayside which wasn't provided. You know, we don't have a regular window into these conversations. So I think it would be really important, given the scale of the challenge and how important this is to the city, to bring together that group of people who can reflect both what's happening in the city. And I would say that part of that, I think the issue about the crisis centre, which we've raised as elected members time and again for four years now. It was raised by Labour at First Minister's Questions. It's not a party political issue, as said, it was received well by the First Minister back in 2017. And then we had colleagues from around the chamber and also from other parts of the SNP in the paper on Friday past, talking about the hope that this might happen. You know, we are hearing demands for these issues from people, you know, in the city. And we're looking for answers for them. And it's difficult to get those answers at times, I have to say. So I think this would be the right forum that Bailey Keenan's brought to the Labour group. And I thought it was a very sensible proposal. And it met with the support of all our group. And I would hope that other members would agree that this is something that could contribute to the recovery of the people in the city in the coming months.
Thanks both for your contribution. And just in response to the amendment, I think, first of all, can I just say I really welcome the opportunity to have that further dialogue and discussion around the issues that are contained within the strategy and the issues that are much wider than that and that we're all very live to. I suppose my difficulty with it is I don't believe that a working group is the best vehicle for achieving what I think you're looking to achieve. Now, of course, this is a Tayside wide strategy, it isn't Dundee specific. And we're being asked to endorse that Tayside wide approach. And it involves, you know, key partners NHS Tayside and the IGB. And just looking at the, you know, the arrangements that's been suggested around a working group to oversee implementation, clearly it's not the council implementing that strategy. And there are others involved in that process, whether it be MSPs or councillors and neighbouring local authorities as well. I'm also conscious that, you know, David Strang is due back and will report back in the summer on the actions to review. And I think one of the particular elements of that is the strategy. And personally, I'm not convinced that a smaller working group is the best way to take that conversation forward. I know from my group's perspective, all 14 members would want to be involved in that conversation because it's such an important issue for the city. And I'm not clear that a subset of councillors being involved in that conversation is the best route. Now, I think in terms of more regular scrutiny, more regular reporting, more regular updates, that's certainly something that I would welcome and endorse. And I think committee is probably the best forum for bringing that forward, in my personal opinion. And so it's on that basis, I think we're absolutely in agreement that it requires additional scrutiny. It absolutely requires the involvement of elected members from across the board. I'm just not, I don't believe a small working group is the best vehicle for taking forward that conversation. On that basis, I wouldn't be minded to agree with your amendment. But I would be minded to do the things that I've just suggested in terms of speaking to the chief executive and expanding, you know, the opportunities for elected members to have an input, to scrutinise and to hold to account those that are taking forward the strategy as well. And I'll just bring in my colleague councillor Lynne at this stage.
Yeah, thanks, convener. I understand councillor Keenan's, sorry, it's Bailey Keenan, is coming from, with his amendment. But having said that, I agree with what you say. And one of my concerns is that I wouldn't want to see officer time, senior management time tied up any more than they already are because in terms of the NHS and the IGB, and the IGB, we have a meeting on Wednesday. We have made a commitment to try and keep our agenda as light as possible. NHS Tayside have reduced the number of committees that are meeting during the pandemic, particularly after this second wave. And, you know, senior officers, senior management already have a lot of reporting lines. And I don't think it's necessarily useful, necessarily useful to put added pressure on them. I don't know whether they would want to comment on that or not. And I'm also reassured by what Kate said and what I'm sure Arlene agrees with about how important it is to learn, to listen to service users, those experiencing mental ill health, about how the implementation of the strategy is going. And I, as Chair of the IGB, will certainly be keeping a close eye on that. I expect that Bailey Wright will as the Labour member on the IGB. So yeah, I'm agreement with you, convener, although I have some sympathy with what councillor Keenan says. I'm not sure this is the best time.
Great. Thanks for that. I see no other questions or comments at this point. So I'm just going to take it to the vote on that basis.
Can I maybe ask what your proposals would be in relation to that level of engagement? Are we going to see a report monthly? Are we seeing a report bimonthly? What we've seen coming back, you know, I'm thinking I'm trying to offer you something that's less cumbersome than is being painted than even what yourself is suggesting, you know. So what's the offer that you're making in relation to the engagement of 29 councillors?
I think, I mean specifically, and I might invite officers just to add some meat to the bone on what's possible. But I think we have a process in place by which councillors can scrutinise the arrangements of our fellow partners. And, you know, the next report in terms of the ADP and Drug Commission work is another important example of that. And I think it's important that we allow these bodies to move forward with that implementation and again, report back on a regular basis. So I think, you know, I wouldn't be looking for a monthly update. I think that would be excessive in terms of what we would be expecting. I think we need to have a regular oversight of that progress report, just as we've done on some other areas of council. But arguably, we could identify several areas of work which are of significance and of importance and have monthly meetings. But I don't think that's practical or pragmatic or sensible in the circumstances. So, you know, I think six monthly reporting on progress is absolutely reasonable in the circumstances. And particularly where we are to ensure that that accountability is being held. Now, within the parameters of that six months, I would also be expecting written briefings in particular that could be provided to update elected members on the progress. So that would be my suggestion. And, you know, you've heard the contributions that have been made so far. So I'm going to move to the vote.
Can I make another comment? You and I both sit on the Drugs Partnership.
We do indeed.
And I think we'll make a valuable contribution. It's a similar approach, it's a similar approach and suggestion. All 29 councillors have got an interest in the Drugs Commission. I'm not looking for, great, I'm not looking for something to hinder it, but I think saying, you know, let it come back in six months' time is just inadequate.
Councillor Keenan, we're not going to agree on this because actually there is already, we have representatives on the IGB and the NHS who provide a level of scrutiny as well. So that is already in operation in terms of elected member scrutiny. So I don't think that that point is entirely accurate. But I'm going to bring in Bailey MacPherson at this point. And then thereafter, I will go to the vote on that basis. Bailey MacPherson.
Thanks, convener. With the greatest of respect, we will support councillor Duncan and I will support Bailey Keenan. And I don't particularly necessarily agree with all the wording in his amendment about overseeing the implementation. You're quite correct about other partners and a Tayside wide strategy. You're absolutely correct on that. However, I do feel that there is a lot of merit in some form of group, which means regularly to be appraised of the progress, similar to briefings. But to be appraised of the progress, to keep a frankly, a Dundee City Council hand on the tiller cross party, because this is not a party political issue. And I'm not quite sure that the formal position of the debate committee once every six months, plus the promise of some ad hoc briefings, which may not occur, perhaps sort of cuts the mustard in that respect. So whilst accepting your point, which is perfectly valid in relation to the governance, which I alluded to earlier, and the complexity of that Tayside wide governance, I still think there is some merit in some appraisal being undertaken by a group as suggested by Bailey Keenan. So for that reason, I think it's the view of councillor Duncan and myself that we'll support Bailey Keenan in this.
Okay, thanks very much. Bailey MacPherson. Tracy, we'll just go to the vote on that basis, please. Thank you.
Do you have a second, convener?
That's a very good point. Do I have a second?
I'll second you, convener, councillor Lynne.
Thank you.
In that case, the motion by the convener, seconded by councillor Lynne, is approval of the report. The amendment by Bailey Keenan, seconded by councillor Mara, is approval of the report with the additional recommendation of the establishment of a working group of elected members to oversee implementation of the strategy. Convenor.
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost Campbell.
Motion.
Councillor Dawson.
The motion.
Councillor Flynn.
Motion.
Councillor Hunter.
Motion.
Councillor Lynne.
Motion.
Councillor Rendall.
Motion.
Bailey Roberts.
Motion.
Councillor Rome.
Motion.
Councillor Ross.
Motion.
Bailey Sawyers.
Motion.
Councillor Short.
Motion.
Councillor Smith.
Motion.
Bailey Keenan.
Amendment.
Councillor Crookshank.
Amendment.
Councillor McCready.
Amendment.
Councillor McCarvin.
Amendment.
Councillor Malone.
The amendment.
Councillor Mara.
Amendment.
Councillor Richardson.
Amendment.
Bailey Wright.
Amendment.
Bailey Scott.
Motion.
Councillor Hay.
Motion.
Councillor Scott.
Motion.
Bailey MacPherson.
The amendment.
Councillor Duncan.
Amendment.
Lord Provost.
Motion.
Councillor Murray.
Amendment.
We have 17 votes for the motion, 11 votes for the amendment. The motion is carried.
Thank you. And again, thank you to Kate, Linda and Arlene. We'll move on to the next item. Tracy.
Item three, revised Dundee alcohol and drug partnership action plan for change. Again, this is for noting.
Another incredibly important issue which we face as a city. And obviously, a lot of action has been undertaken led by the work of the Dundee Drug Commission. And this report provides an update on some of that progress, some of the challenges and also some of the ways in which we intend to take it forward, including the reconvening of the Dundee Drug Commission in July. And now I have invited Simon Little, the independent chair of the ADP, along tonight because I think it's always valuable, as I said on the previous item, to get that external insight. And obviously, Simon being a leader in terms of the drugs agenda and helping the city, you know, deliver on that really challenging action plan as well. So can I just welcome Simon? And Simon, I'll hand over to you for a brief overview, please. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, convener. Hope you can hear me. I'm trying to switch my camera on, but unfortunately it seems to have frozen, so.
We can hear you loud and clear. And if the experience tonight is anything to go by, audio might be best.
Right, okay, that's absolutely fine. So thanks very much for the opportunity to address the committee. I won't take you through the detail of the report, but instead offer some general observations. As you'd expect, the Covid pandemic continues to have an impact. So what you have in front of you is the most up to date iteration of the plan with a narrative to explain why changes have occurred. As the independent chair of the ADP, I take assurance from a number of things. Whilst Covid has challenged individual targets, the overall ambition of the plan remains very much intact. Indeed, developments in the last few months have made me more optimistic that we can achieve the necessary changes in our whole system of care. The previous item on the mental health strategy shows there's an increasing convergence of thinking on how support for those affected by substance use and mental health shoes can drive forward and support recovery. The pandemic has meant some things have had to be done differently, but there has been a clear focus on those at high risk, whilst also offering routes to continuing support for others. So for example, ISMS have been able to continue to provide a speedy response to referrals for assessment and treatment. Non-fatal overdose responses continued throughout. IT and other areas of priority have been strengthened through further enhanced outreach services. And more generally, services have also responded by offering telephone and online support. Healthcare Improvement Scotland undertook some research into our Covid response and found evidence of innovation and learning, accelerated decision making and closer collaboration between statutory and third sector organisations. And I sincerely hope we can bottle that for the future. Certainly, that learning and spirit of collaboration has meant that when restrictions have been reimposed, there's been a blueprint in place so that we can drive forward on what needs to be done. My optimism for the future comes in part from the work being done to bring forward the application to Cora. There's been close discussion with the drug task force in development of that. If this proposal is successful in receiving funding, its test for change for integrating mental health and substance use services, one-stop shops and 24-hour crisis care could be a launch platform for radical change, facilitating improved accessibility, choice and shared care advocated by the Drugs Commission. But it's clear to me that irrespective of whether or not the Cora application is successful, there is high level buy-in to this direction of travel, which is very reassuring to me. To quickly touch upon the proposal for return of the Drug Commission, I believe it will be very valuable to have that external view on progress. I particularly welcome the suggestion that as part of that work, the ADP should provide an initial self-assessment. I believe that will help to make the process constructive and transparent. But looking ahead, it will be important to show that we can robustly and transparently test our performance month to month, year to year, without the need for a commission or similar. So thank you very much, convener. Happy to take any questions.
Simon, thanks again. Really appreciate your insight there. I'll just bring in first of all Bailey MacPherson.
Thanks, convener, and grateful to Simon for that. I should first of all say, I thought that, you know, we were talking about the the encyclopedia length of the previous item. And in the case of this, a very clean and crisp, I have to say, appendix one in relation to the action plan review, which is welcome, clean, crisp and very understandable. My question's really around the use of the funding that's alluded to in 3.2. And it indicates that £100,000 to £500,000 that was set aside in the current year revenue budget has been committed to fund five additional nurses. I was just really wondering, are they in post? And what, where are you in relation to the use of the remaining £400,000 that was set aside in the current year revenue budget?
Okay, on that one, councillor, I think I'll ask Diane McCullough to come in on that particular question.
Surely.
Thank you, Simon. So that's only partial cost of a full year budget for the nursing staff, Bailey MacPherson, so it didn't spend as much as we had originally planned. The five members of staff were recruited to, it's to increase our non-medical prescribing so that we can have as quick a response as possible. Some of the staff came trained, some are currently doing the training. The service continues to have vacancies going forward and we continue to recruit to those. In terms of staffing numbers, that was to increase that.
Okay, thanks for that.
Thanks. Can I just ask the chief executive to come in? I should have done that before I moved on to your question, Bailey MacPherson. But I'm aware that there's been some dialogue with the commission itself in terms of just the arrangements and trying to to get that to a place where everybody's happy with it. So Greg, can I ask you to come in, please?
Yeah, thank you, convener. And just picking up on Bailey MacPherson's point regarding any unspent money of the £500,000, depending on the year-end position, it would be very much my desire that we carry that forward. So that money is still available, any underspent, to use for any other projects or work that's needed to deliver this action plan. And I've met with Robert Pete along with the chief executive of NHS Tayside and had a few discussions. and had a few discussions with Robert just over the last couple of days. It was generally firstly to build that relationship, being a new chief executive, but just also to talk about the experience and the value the commission will continue to bring, given feedback on actions that have been completed. I'd advise Robert that I would just update committee, that we are absolutely committed to the commission coming back and that we would ensure that the July timescale for starting that work, that any pre-work that could be done beforehand, whether or not it's looking at data, analysing data or making sure that any data sharing arrangements were in place, would be done at that point. And Robert was happy with the July date for that work continuing. The other aspect that I touched on with Robert was about timescale. And again, following discussion with Robert on Friday particularly and indeed yesterday via email, I said I would notify committee, that would be my intention to update you, that there would be sufficient timescale for the commission to undertake the work that would deal with the content and objectives that we were looking for the commission to undertake, such as checking on the progress to date and that we would be as flexible as we could with that time period. So overall, a really positive discussion outlining the start date and also looking at how we might deliver the commission going forward. And just my commitment as the incoming new chief executive that I would work really hard to make sure we would do that as quickly as possible and Robert would have resources available to support the work of the commission.
Thanks, Greg. That's helpful. I'll just bring in councillor Lynn next.
Aye, yeah, just on what was said about the underspend from last year being carried over. Really pleased to be able to announce tonight that as part of the budget for next year, we'll be adding an additional £500,000 to the fight on drugs and the impact it has on people's lives. And that, of course, will be in addition to the £250 million that was announced by the government, £50 million per annum over the next five years, of which I'm hopeful that Dundee will see a sizable chunk. And councillor Keenan and I, along with other members of the Drug Commission, were recently in conversation with Angela Constance, who's the new minister with responsibility for drugs policy, to try and drive home the extent of the problem in Dundee and really make an appeal for for the help, further help that we really, really need to combat this terrible problem which affects so many of our citizens. The specific questions that I had, yeah, I just wanted to ask about the CORA funding. It says in the report we'd be hearing, well, certainly hope to hear by mid-February. I assume we haven't heard yet. I'm wondering what the revised date was. And secondly, a lot of groundbreaking work going on on non-fatal overdoses, five new nurses, et cetera. I was quite interested in the section in the report on assertive outreach. If someone could maybe explain exactly how that works, that'd be good. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Diane, do you want to come in?
Simon's about to come in.
Oh, Simon, sorry.
Whichever, Diane, I'll fight you. Do you want to fight for it or do you want to start first?
You go first, Simon. I'm happy to come behind you.
Okay, yes. So, convener, on the CORA application, we got our bid in to the timescales requested. It's now with them. We had been given an indication it would be around now. We had been hoping we would have heard, but we haven't. It's out with our control, but I think we will hear soon. The muted music in the run-up to this was positive. I think it was fair to say, although CORA is an independent body and so they'll be doing their own assessment, but there is, I have a reasonable degree of optimism around this. With regard to assertive outreach, that's for example, well, outreach in general has been an important aspect of the recent response and a growing one since the commission. So for example, with regard to non-fatal overdose response, if somebody's had a non-fatal overdose, some of them may be connected into services and you can be in contact with them through that route. But some of the most at-risk people are not. They may have been in and out of services or they may have arrived in the city from elsewhere and are frankly in our communities but not receiving the treatment that they need and perhaps maybe homeless or whatever or in other insecure environment. So outreach in those circumstances is about trying to find them. And indeed, that can mean walking the streets to find them and then try and engage them back into services or into services for the first time. So that is an area that's been enhanced, for example, through positive steps. But there was also activity by Hillcrest Futures and BBV team were also involved through COVID as well. And it's an area, I think, we've learned can be increasingly part of our response to reach out to those who may have had a mixed relationship with services in the past. One way to get them back into outreach to others as well, as I say, who can be at high risk, it's proving to be an invaluable piece of work. Other examples might be engaging those who are leaving prison. There's a new project there which is linking people with through care from prison and offering outreach to them, making sure that they are connected into services as well. That's a more organised arrangement, if you like, but that's a group that in the past has been liable to fall through the net at times and they're known to be quite a higher risk group for non-fatal and fatal overdoses. So I hope that gives you some insight. Another initiative, the Seastone Bus, which operates in our communities at the weekend, we've received additional funding to enhance that. And these initiatives in general have been good at reaching out to, for example, women who may be at higher risk but not closely in touch with services for a range of reasons. I hope that answers your question.
It does, thank you.
Simon.
Yeah.
Yep. Diane, is there anything you would like to add? I think that was fairly comprehensive.
I think that covered everything that needed.
Great, thank you. Councillor Rendall.
Thank you, convener. It was just, I was pleased to see in the substantive report, page 197, the mention of the prevention framework for Dundee and particularly reference to the youth in Iceland model. This is something I know a bit about because a friend of mine actually went to Iceland to take part in that. So I do feel it's really important to, you know, as well as having to deal with the effects of people that have possibly been in substance misuse for a long time, a number of years, to get in as early as possible with preventative measures. So I would just like to hear a little bit more, maybe not just now in committee, but interested to know a bit more about the youth in Iceland. I know that my friend has been in touch with a couple, I think with councillor Lynn in particular, with regard to updating that model. So if there's any indication of timescale as to when that might happen, I know it says October 2021, but the youth in Iceland one was a bit earlier. So just wondered if Diane or anybody has any further information on that at the moment?
I can take that one, convener.
Yep, please go ahead, Simon.
Yeah, so actually today there was a discussion of the Youth in Iceland research group and there is a briefing session being arranged to which some elected members, senior officials from the city will be invited to, I think it's occurring in April. The proposal is likely to involve an initial pilot with one school in Dundee, which will test survey materials and what learning might be available to work closer with parents and what kind of structured activity might come out of that initiative. But I think that's with the intention of showing a pilot that we might develop in Dundee as a whole, but in a stage process. But we, there's been a tie-up with an organisation called Winning Scotland, which works with schools amongst other things in raising aspiration and attainment with young people. They have worked with other authorities as well. So this is an initiative that is now starting to take legs with, I think, four other local authorities as well, Western Bartenshire and Highland and others, Argyle and Bute, I think. So that briefing session in April will be for a number of councils. But I think it's an initiative that's gaining some traction. It's part of a universal approach to tackling harms in alcohol and drugs. It will not be a panacea for more specialist care and attention where things are more complex. But it is an important plank in a preventative strategy. That said, I think Kate Bell's earlier comments with regard to mental health and the drivers of mental health and substance use, poverty and deprivation, historic trauma, et cetera, these are big issues that as a city we need to address. And that's particularly why I'm keen that the ADP's work is led to the Dundee partnership because this is a big community planning issue, really. There are many things that we need to do on prevention. Youth in Iceland would be one example of that, but there are many other things that need to be done too.
Okay.
Thanks very much. Thank you.
Thanks for your question. I don't see any other questions at this point. So Simon, again, thank you very much for giving up your evening and thank you to Diane as well. I'll just go back to Bailey Keenan. You have an amendment, so I'll hand over to yourself.
Well, convener, perhaps the amendment, given what the chief executive said there, feels a bit insignificant or goes along the line of it will be agreed because we're just amending the report enough to say that the Drugs Commission will be given adequate time. So if we can agree that, then I would hope we could move forward. And I've got a couple of questions that I would have liked to have asked as well.
Okay, thank you. I think on the basis of obviously the feedback that was provided by the chief executive in terms of that, that guide of looking at six months and reporting back in January, just as you say in your amendment, but making sure that we have that ability to flex to ensure that, you know, we aren't too constrained in that regard is exactly what the chief executive said. So if you're happy on that basis, then I'll let you in for your two questions.
Okay, I think the, I think it's important the Drugs Commission got adequate time to do its work rather than the three months that was in the report. So we're really pleased that there's been a level of dialogue in that change. I think there's a lot of good work went on and obviously Simon's went through a considerable amount of that. I think the 24-hour Crisis Centre is really important for the city and it's really important for the city in relation to the item that we've just dealt with as well. Something that the city is crying out for. So I welcome that and I would obviously welcome some data as to relation to when that would be in place, when can we expect it to be there. I think the Drugs Commission in relation to the CORA bid that's going forward for the Drugs and Alcohol Partnership is welcome. The Drugs Commission, as you're aware, there is quite a number of people on that commission that work in the field in relation to drugs and their comments were very supportive and they were very supportive when we, as the Drugs Commission, met the minister and hoping that the minister would be seeing that particular project that we've looked for funding for very favourably in coming forward. So let's hope that that delivers that funding and pleased that the nurse practitioners are in place. That was Labour's budget last year, as you recall. So I'm really pleased that that's been adopted and put into play. The real issue that I think faces us in drugs and mental health is around the stigma and addressing that stigma. And I'm just wondering what other strategies that the Drugs Commission have got in mind to address the stigma of drug misuse and look towards, you know, it being recognised more as a health issue rather than have that stigma attached to it that it has at the moment. I think it's really important that the city recognise that it's a problem as it looks towards rehabilitation. And, you know, something that really needs to drive forward. Stigma, you know, and the sort of attitude really needs to change and that could be within the sort of individuals that are working in that field as well. Because I know that we often have people that work in certain areas that aren't the best suited to dealing with customers. So, you know, if that's that level of issue, then it's something that we need to be addressed. So I would welcome comments for officers as to, in particular, how stigma will be addressed as we take the strategy forward.
Thanks, Kevin. I'll bring officers in in just a moment, but obviously members will be aware of some of the work that's been undertaken, partly informed, of course, by the work of the Fairness Commission as well. And there is that ongoing dialogue. If you look at the Recovery Pledge as one example of that attempt and, you know, the work to identify the issues around stigma and support people in various communities. You often see it in the window of businesses, for example. I noticed it more recently in Lowke. So there is work underway and that engagement is continuing. And just to add to that, myself and the chief executive have met a couple of times with the Fairness Commission more recently. And again, another issue of stigma, both related to poverty and drugs, is something that they are very focused on. But I'll bring officers in on that specific point. Diane, do you want to come in?
I could see Simon's fluttering one terms of his. He may have some views as well.
Sorry, it's because I can't see Simon on my screen, so I was just in apologies.
Well, I'm happy to kind of touch both of the issues that Bailey Keenan has raised. So if I start with stigma, I'm sure Simon would want to come in. Absolutely agree that this is something that we need to keep progressing and working towards. There's a number of bits of work that are going on. There's the anti-stigma commitment which the ADP are taking through and looking at. And there's also the Language Matters programme that we're also looking to work through. So we're aiming to get a lot of that work up and running again. I think it probably, it didn't falter, but in terms of the pandemic is one of the areas we've maybe not progressed quite as well as we would want to and to take forward. So that work is ongoing and linked into a lot of our other pieces of work that we're doing. Bailey Keenan's asked about the approach in terms of the CORA bid and Simon's spoken really favourably about our hopes around that. It's probably worth just saying that we're breaking that work into three stages. So first stage will be absolutely about working with his to map out and getting ready for the kind of change that we need to take. And we've given the commitment to appoint a worker that will help us start to do that work. And the second bit is about building on what we're doing in terms of our community hubs. So most of our community hubs had to stand down as a result of the pandemic. It will be about getting them up and running, about making sure that we can deliver services in localities and where people are. And that broadening that from perhaps what we're doing now to include things like benefits and employment as well as access to services and treatment. And then the third stage is about having, and we'll run through, and I'm describing these as three stages because we think they build up to us getting the right model in terms of our 24-hour crisis support, about whether that's one place or several places or contacts or patient, because we do believe that it's not just one thing we need to put in place for 24-hour crisis support, it's a range of things to put in place. There's nothing to stop these three stages running parallel to one another. They don't have to be linear in terms of the approach. And I think a lot of what we'll do in stage one, provided we absolutely get that support, will help us start to form our thinking as early as possible. So at this stage, unfortunately, not able to give a definitive timescale. We have applied for two years' funding because we do recognise that as part of this work, it is about bringing our mental health and our substance misuse service into a much clearer approach, which is as integrated as we can possibly get it. But, and recognise that's a huge piece of work for our city, but there's nothing to stop us progressing these things as soon as we've got a clarity about what it is we want to do and how we're going to do it. And I don't know if Simon would maybe want to come in now.
Simon?
Yeah, thanks, Diane. Yes, I think I'd just like to make a point about the stigma side of things. The commission report was entitled, its emphasis was on hope and dignity and respect and compassion. And I think we will demonstrate that we've tackled stigma and we can show that that's the case for all of our services. I'm not saying that this is an issue which concerns all of us day to day, but if we are thinking about this kind of service we should aspire to, a non-stigmatising service, set of services, the ones where people are treated with dignity and respect, where the care is person-centred, recognises people's, how the circumstances have been driven over time, for example, through trauma and why people may have responded in particular ways at particular times and arrived at a particular point. It recognises that, public health recognises that social isolation is stigmatising or you can be socialised because of stigma and that drives you away from engagement with services, et cetera. So we need services that are accessible and appropriate for you. And those services should be appropriately resourced, that they don't look like Cinderella services in comparison to other areas. That would be non-stigmatising. And finally, that the environments that people were treated in or received support in were as welcoming as you'd expect in any other service, where you're welcomed by people who had time for you, respect and care for you and that the actual physical environment reflected that. When we've got all those things in place, we can probably say to ourselves that we no longer have stigmatising arrangements. I'm sure most of us would recognise there's probably some way to go there. That should be our ambition. We have been able to embark on that as quickly as we would have liked. I think language is part of it, but there are many, many other things that will show the way ahead when it comes to tackling stigma.
Thanks, Simon, and thanks, Diane, for the contributions. Just a reminder, because for some reason, despite a year of having been able to see all these hands-up functions, Just a reminder, because for some reason, despite a year of having been able to see all these hands up functions, I can no longer see hands up. So please put a comment in the chat. And Michael, I'll hand over to you for the last question on this item.
Thanks, thanks, Kevina. Sorry about the hand thing. I did hear you say it earlier on, but then I forgot. I just, I really wanted to follow up Bailey Keenan's point around the kind of the integration of mental health and drugs and the stigma issue. And Kevina, you'll recall our time together on the Fighting for Fairness Commission and the report that came out of that. And how important this issue about the fact that if you had a mental health problem, you couldn't get a drugs problem seen to. And if you had a drugs problem, you couldn't get a mental health problem seen to. And the complete lack of interaction between those two sides of it. And I know that in, at times over the last couple of years when we've talked about this issue, there has been pushback from formal services saying we don't recognise some of that caricature. But it was very much the lived experience of people in the city. And we had, we had, I remember, and you'll recall, Tony, one of the assiduous volunteers who went out with questionnaires, went to Eagles Wings and sat in cafes and got people to fill them in. And they told them time and time again that the two issues were not being addressed together. So I just really want to welcome what Diane had to say about, you know, the system change for that. But as much as it is about systems, it's about culture as well. And I think that that report that was, that was very clear from the Drugs Commission about the the need for a culture change and what was viewed to be a punitive service and the way that people were being pushed away for, and the way that they were treated. And actually, this linking up between mental health and drugs provision is absolutely critical, I think. And so I really welcome Bailey Keenan's comments on it, but I really welcome the response that Diane has made to that in particular. Because I think it's absolutely critical to deal with these problems, problems in the city. So very much welcome that. So no question, but I just felt really important to say that this will address one of the key concerns of that report as well, Kevina.
Okay, no, thanks. And your comments are very welcome. And I think you're absolutely right. This is clearly a key issue for the entire city. I think we speak with a unanimous voice when we're talking about the challenge before us and how we intend to take it forward. And I think this report illustrates some of that determination, but also bringing the opportunity to, for the Drugs Commission itself to come back together to review that progress is going to be, I think, a really worthwhile opportunity. I suppose just to see if we are doing as well as we thought we would against some of those areas, but also how we can push even harder and accelerate the pace of change, as has been highlighted in reports more recently. So with all of that and with all the contributions, I'm going to take that as agreed. Thank you. We'll move on.
That takes us on to item four, financial implications of the council's response to COVID-19 emergency and financial recovery update. Again, this report is for noting.
Detailed, detailed report before you, and I don't intend to go into any great detail because you've already read it all. So I'll just go straight to Bailey McPherson.
Thanks, Kevina. My question's in relation to the points about leisure and culture Dundee at 5.3. And the final sentence reads, quote, "The organisation will face a much more significant financial challenge in the financial year 2122 as a result of reduced customer income as restrictions are eased." Now, I would have thought, in fact, leisure and culture Dundee income will start to come back a little bit as restrictions are eased, as some facilities are opened. But clearly, the, there'll be a significant loss of income from the loss of financial support through the furlough scheme, obviously, as, as restrictions are eased. So I think we all understand the, the real significant challenges facing leisure and culture Dundee and clearly something that will be being planned by the leisure and culture Dundee board. Given, frankly, what are we, lender of the last resort? I don't know. But we certainly have a really significant financial issue and we want to see the success of leisure and culture Dundee. And leisure and culture Dundee ride this, quite frankly, financial storm that an organisation of its nature, and it will be replicated all around the country, is facing. And I was just really wondering what reassurance officers can give in relation to the discussions they've had with the leisure and culture Dundee management in relation to how they're planning the next financial year, given that I fully accept the fact that their, their customer base will come back. But the, but it will come back over time, without doubt. And will not return straight away, given the, the challenges of social distancing. Some facilities will not be able to come back straight away. So I'd just be, I'm just really after some reassurance from officers in that regard.
Thanks, Bailey McPherson. I think you're absolutely right. There's certainly a moral obligation to ensure that we can continue to deliver the services that are provided through leisure and culture Dundee. And I think we all see L A C D as a jewel in the crown. And I know it's been very welcome, right, announcements in the last couple of weeks have brought additional revenue through the loss of income scheme, which I think has gone quite a significant way to address some of those concerns in terms of not necessarily having to delve into reserves, for example. But I'll just ask officers to come in and give you that reassurance because you don't want it from me, you want it from the professionals. So can I invite Sandy or Greg?
Thanks, Kevina. So if I just start and then we'll pass over to Sandy if there's any details that I miss out. So Bailey McPherson, you're quite right, we do expect income to come back from leisure and culture Dundee. But given the loss of, as you've also noted, the potential UK job retention scheme, we think that that income will not bounce back to the levels pre-COVID. Council Alexander touched on the loss of income scheme, so that has been increased from 90 million to 200 million in the current year. So this report, you may have noted, does not include any allocation of the leisure and culture Dundee reserve position. So that reserve position will be maintained following agreement tonight of this report. In addition to that, the council will continue to work with the management team. And you may recall that the previous report we brought to committee saw approval for a letter of comfort to be prided for leisure and culture Dundee, which officers have dealt with through working with leisure and culture Dundee staff. In addition to that, there has been announcements in the last week where 534 million is being made available by Scottish Government for 2021 COVID pressures and 2122 COVID pressures, details of which have not been announced in terms of the distribution. But officers will continue with, to engage with leisure and culture Dundee to ensure that we provide support. And again, it will be reported back to committee when we consider the overall council and leisure and culture Dundee COVID pressures and the strategy that officers look to put in place. So that is due to come back to committee over the next few weeks and months ahead. So hopefully that gives you some reassurance around the steps that are currently being taken.
That's very helpful, Greg. Thanks very much for that. And I think it's reassuring that we will be updated in relation to the strategy and approach taken in partnership with leisure and culture Dundee to ensure that the organisation withers this very challenging situation that through no fault of its own, it finds itself in.
Thanks, Bailey McPherson. I see no other questions on this item, so I'll take silence as agreement. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Now we want to item five, local government settlement 2021-2022, financial implications for the city council. We have a report before you.
Another factual, financial report that just sets out the context for conversations at present and obviously the upcoming budget. Is there any questions on this particular item? I see two. So Bailey Scott, first of all.
I have two questions, Kevina. The first one is, I copied you into an email that I sent to Greg about the timing of the budget. Because the report makes it clear that there is an element of risk in our budget process because the parliamentary budgeting process won't be completed until the 9th of March. Now, I know some local authorities, because the council tax is to be frozen and hopefully all the groups in our council will agree to that. And they're setting the council tax first, which will allow all the council tax demand books to be issued within the appropriate timescales and then meeting to set their budget at a date after the parliamentary process of budget setting has been completed. So it's really to take a view on, on, on that from you, whether or not there's a need for us to set the council, the budget on the 4th of March. And the second question is about the money that we're receiving to freeze the council tax. Do you know whether that's going to be baseline going forward? Because if not, that means that we're £2 million down already in the subsequent financial year. And if it isn't to be baseline, are we making representations to Cosler and the Scottish Government to ask for it to be baseline?
Thanks. Couple of questions there. I'll bring in officers just on the first point in a second. And I think there are pros and cons to both ways of taking forward the budget. And the discussions that I've had, both with the finance spokesperson for the council and obviously senior officers, I think I would be more reluctant to see a separation of the two and it would create an extended process and a more complicated process and also call upon much more officer time. And I don't think it would have a significant benefit in terms of the process. And there is certainly some merit in taking the two things together. On the second point that you raised, and then I'll perhaps invite Greg to come in in the first instance. There are constant representations being made via Cosler and I think I've shared some of those with the leaders meetings that we continue to have on a fortnightly basis in terms of making sure that any funding that does come forward is baseline. Now, at this stage, I don't have any clarity on whether or not that will be baseline. I don't know if, again, Greg might have more of an insight on that particular issue. But you can rest assured that I'll continue to make representations and to try and squeeze every sinew of resource that I possibly can for the city of Dundee and for the agenda that we'll want to take forward. But Greg, can I just invite you in on those points?
Yeah, thanks, Kevina. So with regards to splitting the council tax and the budget, I am aware that there are two local authorities, to my knowledge in Scotland, who are taking that position. Having consulted with Roger and Sandy and indeed your new section 95 officer who starts with the council on Thursday, all of our views remain the same, that we should continue to deal with the budget and the council tax setting as laid out in this report. And if there is additional funding that is made available, we will deal with that as and when that's announced. However, if there is additional funding, it's not guaranteed that that will flow to local government. So my advice on separating the remains that we should deal with both the budget setting and the council tax as laid out within the report. To date, there is no agreement to baseline the £90 million council tax freeze budget, which was part of the settlement for the 2122 budget. Previous council tax freezes has led to the budget being baseline going forward. However, my understanding is that there's no commitment at this time through Cosler and Directors of Finance and Solis. We continue to lobby for that because as Bailey Scott outlined, there would be a hole in the budget for 2223. And I can give you the assurance that that lobbying for that to be baseline as part of future year budgets is certainly something that as an organisation we'll continue to do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bailey Scott. councillor Duncan?
Thanks, Kevina. Can I just, with reference to the first paragraph on page 216, which talks about a review of resources to be undertaken, which is likely to lead to a significant reduction in the workforce of the council. Now, obviously, we don't know what monies we're dealing with at the moment, a budget hasn't been set and so forth. So I'm not expecting chapter and verse tonight. But it can't be a comfortable situation for any employee of this council to perhaps feel that there's something of a sort of Damocles hanging over them. So I'm really looking for an assurance tonight that the council, at the earliest opportunity, will be as open as it possibly can be with all its workforce. And secondly, that we can have a presumption against any compulsory redundancies.
Thanks for your question. I'll bring in officers in just a moment. And obviously, the paragraph that you reference or the, the specific section is on the long term financial outlook and is part of the, the report that we have previously discussed and agreed. And I think it should, it should be absolutely clear from this meeting that that long term strategy raises and lays out particular issues, concerns and challenges ahead, which may or may not come to fruition. And it is that long term outlook and informing, you know, the council's governance and ourselves on what those challenges might look like. It isn't a blueprint, it isn't certainly set in stone. So I think that needs to be loud and clear. I think the other thing is the value of the workforce is absolutely, I think, felt across all 29 elected members and by senior officers. And we've seen the tremendous efforts across the entirety of our workforce and beyond over the last 12 months in particular and how important that has been. And I think, you know, we've all spoken at length about how important that, that council workforce has been. And going above and beyond their daily, their daily roles, I suppose. And finally, I think we've said this several times and I'm happy to say it, until I'm out of breath, which is that, you know, under no circumstances do we ever want to be in a position and would we ever, you know, envisage being in a position where we had to make compulsory redundancies. And that was always the case and will continue to be the case, that we never look under that particular rock, you know, in the, the coming years. And I think, you know, we've got a budget position coming up and I think we'll be able to set out very clearly our ambition for the future and how we intend to take that forward without compulsory redundancies and still deliver the important things that people value. But Greg, do you want to say anything in addition to those comments?
No, I think, Kevina, you've covered the main points. This is our long term financial strategy, councillor Duncan, something that Audit Scotland have asked us to do there. And I think it's just alleging the fact that we will keep a review on resources, just like what we will do in terms of capital plan, third sector payments. And it's really around good governance. But to give you that assurance that if we were considering any significant reduction in the workforce, which given the current budget settlement is unlikely, then that matter would be brought back to committee. It's not something officers would do under delegated authority. And I believe councillor Alexander's clarified the position with regards to compulsory redundancies.
Thank you. Thanks very much, Greg. It was really those kind of assurances that I was looking for. Thanks.
Thanks, councillor Duncan. I'll just bring in the council's finance spokesperson, councillor, or Bailey Sawyer, should I say?
Absolutely. Three very quick points, if I may, Kevina. Firstly, this is the 12th budget of this administration. We've never had any compulsory redundancies and we don't intend to have any. And I think it's, I don't wish to be overly critical, but I do think it's a bit mischievous, obviously no more than that, of councillors to bring that into the equation because I don't think that's helpful for our staff who have gone through a huge period of stress over the past year and have worked above and beyond the call of duty. Second point is, I think, in terms of the separation of a council tax setting and the setting of the council's budget, I think the council's chief executive gives some wise advice here. I think perhaps if this had been looked at two or three months ago, we might have been in a position to do that, but not at a stage where we're literally within two weeks of setting the budget. And lastly, just to welcome Bailey Scott's support for the finance package that the Scottish Government's brought forward. It's allowing us to have a council tax freeze this year. Thanks, Kevina.
Thanks very much. I'll just bring in Bailey McPherson next.
Just the briefest of comments to say that, and I don't want to appear too critical either, but Bailey, Bailey Sawyer's is quite wrong to suggest it is in any way mischievous to ask questions and to seek assurances. These assurances were given, that is accepted and with, with thanks. But I think we reach a sad state of affairs where elected members ask perfectly reasonable questions and are accused of being mischievous.
Okay, I think that point will be noted. And I see no other questions on this report. So again, I'll take silence as agreed. Thank you all very much. That's Tracy.
All right, we now move on to item six, revenue monitoring 2020-2021. You have a report before you.
Again, self explanatory. Is there any questions on this? Sorry, Fraser, I was about to come to you thinking you were wanting in, but that's from the previous item. So any other questions or comments on this? No. Okay, I'll take that as agreed. Thank you.
That takes us to item seven, capital expenditure monitoring 2020-21. This is for noting.
Again, self explanatory. Any questions? No, silence is agreement. Thank you.
That takes us to the final item on the agenda, item eight, capital plan 2021 to 2026, general services and housing H R E.
Let's go straight into questions. So Bailey McPherson.
Thanks, Kevina. We're generally comfortable with what officers are bringing forward today. But we have a very specific question. I should say, it may well be that we may look in the revenue budget to see if capital can be enhanced by some further revenue support. But let's just see how it all tumbles out on the day in relation to that. My question is very specifically about something that arose out of the very useful briefing that Mr. Flight gave last week. And I'm very grateful to Sandy for that. I thought that was extremely helpful. And this was a question I'd asked around the, it's actually on page 275 and it's under contingency COVID-19 capital expenditure. I asked for that expenditure. I asked what that expenditure thus far had been on. And we have in fact, Tracy trying to find it on his screen here, we have in fact been given that information. And I have to say, I have some concerns about what has been indicated to be a COVID-19 expenditure. Let me give you some examples. Construction of a salt barn. Car park, presumably resurfacing, a viaduct rebuilding, expenditure on waterfront place. Now, none of that expenditure we don't want to see. Let's be quite clear. But what strikes me is it's a tenuous link with COVID-19. Now, I think we fully accept, convener, that the vast bulk of COVID-19 expenditure that is urgent and so on will be revenue rather than capital. There will be things like business support and IT for school pupils and food support and so on, the sort of issues we've been grappling with over the past year. But my question for officers is, what is the criteria for putting these items under COVID-19? Because I can sort of see, for example, upgrade of the west wing of the city square. Well, you might want to argue that's social distancing, but we're going to be doing that anyway. So I'm not entirely sure why. It strikes me it's a bit of a hidey hole for, if you need some additional expenditure for something, well, we'll just raid this £1,060,000 for that. So I'm just looking for some reassurance because if I don't get it, I'm going to move an amendment taking the... I'm not suggesting for a moment we take the money that's required to be taken away, whether it's COVID or not. But I certainly don't want a big load of money, the remainder, which I think comes to something like £327,000, being kept as a sort of someplace that can be... I was going to say sorted away. That's not fair because it's perfectly legitimate expenditure. But surely it should just be properly accounted for within the proper revenue budget as opposed to put under this particular umbrella, if you like.
Thanks for your question. I'll invite officers to come in in a moment. But just to say, I think perhaps properly accounted for it absolutely will be. And I think the professional integrity of the officers means that you know that will be the case. And I know that you won't be suggesting otherwise. But can I invite, is it Sandy or Greg perhaps, who would like to come in on that particular aspect?
Convener, if I can just ask...
Oh, you've went on mute, Greg, sorry.
Sandy, just to update on Bailey McPherson's question.
Sandy, can you come in, please?
Yeah, thank you. So basically, what has been prepared was a summary of everything potentially could be subject to this contingency. So it's not expenses actually being incurred at this stage. It's all potential. It's been identified by City Development. So basically, they've gone through every building project and programme, line by line, throughout the capital plan, and identified either by the nature of the works, the type of the contractor, whether there's any potential for additional overspend to be incurred through that project. So there's actually quite a limited number of projects, given the number of projects that actually exist within the capital plan. So it's not the case that they're trying to pick particular projects for any reason other than that's the best estimate of what they think the project's underlying potential is. So I've certainly taken some comfort from the information they've given me and the questions I've asked them back about how they've arrived at these numbers. At the briefing, there was some mention about whether the contingency was sufficient or not, given that we didn't know the further impact of COVID. So that's really why there is still some money unaccounted for this, the fact that we've got just over a million pounds contingency with only £700,000 identified. Initially last year, we'd identified £2 million of contingency, which was reduced. And that's partly a result of this line by line review by City Development of the projects that are within this list.
Okay, thanks for that, Sandy, and thanks, convener. Look, I was just minded to say, I mean, I had some concerns about how... What's the word I'm looking for? How you could argue how some of these were COVID related or not. And I was minded to say that, quite frankly, officers should be reprofiling, you know, their own discrete areas of capital as required, as opposed to having this, which I'm not convinced about. But I'm not going to suggest what I was originally going to, which was, quite frankly, to take the 327 balance and use it for something else. I'm not going to do that. But what I am going to request, and I'm sure it's a perfectly reasonable thing you can agree to, which is, can we perhaps have from City Development some explanation as to the detail of how they've come to these particular... Now, I'm not saying necessarily tonight. I notice Neil's got his hand up. Fine. But I wouldn't mind something in writing, to be honest. Just going through all these areas and what the rationale is for why these particular things are in. Because for the life of me, I can't see why some of them would be in. But I'm sure as in life, there will be a rational explanation and I'd just be grateful to hear that.
Thanks, Bailey McPherson. You may well be surprised. But Neil, you've got your hand up. Do you want to come in quickly? And I think your request for that further information, absolutely, I think that can be dealt with. But Neil.
Yeah, thanks, Bailey McPherson. Happy to prepare a bit more detail. I suppose all I was going to add to Sandy's comments were, in terms of that list, to summarise, it's probably, you could look at it, that that's really construction works that were ongoing on site when we went into lockdown. So in terms of contracts that were already in place, so extensions of time, differences in terms of subcontractors and suppliers and such like. So it's really the impact that COVID has had on existing contracts on site. But in terms of your request, I'm happy to come back with some more detail on that.
That's helpful. I'd sort of got the general principle. I understood that. But I would just be grateful for a little bit of the detail, Neil, and I'm grateful that you will come back on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the question. Margaret, councillor Richardson.
Thank you. My question is regards to the information on page 271. And it's in relation to the school estate investment. I mean, I know that the two major projects that had gone previously, Harris and Bill Dragon, they're itemised separately in terms of, you know, the table on page 271. And what I would have liked to see there is, you know, major projects such as the joint campus, which is going to be huge for us. I would like to see these major projects itemised separately as opposed to lumped together in just one figure. I'm just wondering why, you know, is that possible going forward? We could see them.
Okay, thanks for the question. Sandy, do you want to come in on that?
Yeah, I mean, certainly with any of these school projects, once all the consultation is completed and the go aheads has been given to start the projects, we can certainly move lines and break them out individually within the capital plan. At the time of preparing this, I don't think it's even been totally finalised in terms of the Braveweuke Craigie approvals. But certainly the next version of this capital plan would certainly have Braveweuke Craigie broken out as a separate line.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks for the question. If there's no other questions, then I'll just go to councillor Mara, who has an amendment. Michael.
Thanks very much, convener. I wonder if committee services could share the amendment on screen. I think it's fairly straightforward, convener. It relates to the forthcoming and delayed report from the executive director of children and families pertaining to the provision of education in the Western Gateway. I mean, there is no allocation made on the exact line that councillor Richardson has just referred to on page 271 for any form of education investment in the Western Gateway. There is a very open £25.5 million figure for later years after 25, 26, about what might be allocated. So basically, my amendment is to ask that when that report is forthcoming from the executive director of children and families services, that we urgently review this capital plan to ensure that any allocation that's required is put in. Now, that may seem to be quite an obvious statement and that if the policy is forthcoming from the executive director, then you would assume that we will review the capital plan. But over discussions in chambers prior to this, on this very issue, it has been said to me by various members of the administration that we agreed the capital plan as it stood, so, you know, therefore, and there was no money in it for this and that. So you can't be asking for it now. So what I want to make quite clear is that we believe that if the option for the provision of a primary school, as has been promised to the people of the Western Gateway, is that when that's forthcoming, that should be brought in. We do know, and the big issue in this, convener, is about timing. Because by 2025, not that far from now, by Dundee City Council's own figures, there'll be 287 children in the Western Gateway, more than enough to require a primary school to be open by that time. And there's nothing profiled in the spending profile to indicate that there would be a school in place. There'll be £4.1 million of developers' contributions for education brought forward and in the city council's bank accounts by the city council's own figures as well. And it's worth noting that by 2025, a decision has to be made as to how that money should be spent or the money has to be returned to the developer at that time. So the kind of forward planning that we're seeing in this document, I don't think is really acceptable to make sure that we can provide the education that these children have been promised, that the children need and the families have been promised. So the amendment, I've still not seen it on the screen yet, so maybe the committee services are struggling a little bit to share it.
It's been circulated to emails, I should say, so I've received that.
So you'll see it there. It's really, and I will probably just, I don't know if other people are getting that, but I can read it out. As I say, it's fairly short, if that was useful, convener.
Yeah, please, Michael, if you want to go ahead with that.
Once the thing opens, I will do that. So it says, in amendment, the additional recommendation that the capital plan be urgently revised following the production of the executive director for children and families report into options for the provision of primary education in the Western Gateway. It doesn't, so the amendment doesn't preempt the conclusions of that report. It just indicates that it will have to, any capital expenditure required will have to be provided. And so I think it's just a sensible thing to put in here to make sure that when that report comes through, that we can, that we're going to revise this capital plan and give people the school that they need.
Thanks. I mean, I would say initially, you know, if officers come forward with a specific recommendation, then that necessitates the need to potentially review the capital plan. So I think, you know, from my perspective, that's probably a given. It's reviewed as necessary going through the year. But can I just invite, in the first instance, on the specifics of the proposal, if I can ask Greg to come in and just comment on the process that we would normally follow?
Yeah, thanks, convener, and thanks councillor Mara. So having had the chance to read the amendment, I think my advice to committee would be that when the report comes forward from the executive director for children and families, it would need to be very clear about any funding implications as a result of any recommendations. And not only would that have to deal with capital, it would also have to deal with revenue because we would require revenue potentially to support capital. So at this point, my advice might be that it's slightly premature and I would be looking for the executive director of children and families to make sure that within the report that comes forward, that financial implications and therefore any subsequent reviews are noted in that report for committee to take that decision at that time.
Okay, thanks for that, Greg. I'll just go to councillor Malone next. He's seconding the amendment. Charlie, can't hear you.
Yeah, yeah, I'm having a few technology difficulties. So I'm just going to formally second councillor Mara's amendment. I think he's made the case quite clear. I think that the people in the Western Gateway are looking for some kind of clarity about educational provision in the area going forward, especially as the numbers, as councillor Mara quite rightly identified, will only keep growing as the development grows. So I'm just going to formally second councillor Mara.
Thanks for that. Slightly tongue in cheek saying that when you formally second, you usually don't see anything thereafter, but I'll let you off on this occasion.
My tongue is firmly in change. I apologise, convener.
No, not at all, not at all. I think on that basis, and just given what the chief executive has said as well. I mean, for me, it's really seeing the detail of the report that comes forward and then thereafter, considering the contents of that and how it relates to the capital plan more widely. So I think this probably is slightly early in coming forward, if I'm being honest, councillor Mara. It doesn't mean that it won't happen. I just don't think the amendment is appropriate at this stage, considering we're not seeing the contents of the report. So I wouldn't endorse what is contained within that based upon the kind of information that we've received so far. But, sorry, yeah, Bailey Keenan, if you can just comment in the chat next time.
Okay, so just to make a comment, and, you know, it's getting towards the end of the night and no doubt we all want finished. You know, I think we'd be happy to amend it to something closer to the comments made by the chief executive, in which case then, you know, hopefully that's acceptable to all, rather than just dismiss it and say it's too early.
I think the chief executive set out what the current position was. So I don't quite understand why we need an amendment to set out the process that we already follow up, if I'm being honest, Kevin. But I think, you know, based upon what you've just said, I think we're broadly in agreement here if that's the issue. But can I just invite Bailey Sawyer in?
Thanks, convener. I mean, I think we've got a well recognised process where we have a capital plan that looks forward for a number of years, that's renewed every year on occasion. And I can't remember very many times it's been amended mid-year. But we're dealing with something that appears down the line. I think Sandy and his staff, if every time a policy report came forward that had a possible future capital implication, were to then have to sit down and amend the capital plan and bring it to the next policy and resources committee, they'd never be shy of doing that. So I think it makes absolute sense just to make sure that we're treating this as a whole package. And if a policy report comes forward from the executive director of children and families, clearly, as the chief executive said, there will be both capital and revenue implications from that report. And we need to take time to build that into future years' budgets rather than simply acting off the cuff, truly.
Yeah, thanks for that comment. Listen, I think, I'm very conscious of the time. I think we're dancing on the head of a pin, to be honest. But as far as I'm concerned, I think we've got a process in place that deals with that. And on that basis, I'm going to move to the vote and we can decide it through that method. So Tracy, can we go to the vote, please?
Again, do you have a second, or?
Do I have a second, or?
I'll happily formally second you, convener.
Thank you and thank you, Tracy, for the prompt.
So the motion by the convener, seconded by councillor, is that councillor Hunter?
It was.
It was, is for approval for the report. The amendment by councillor Mara, seconded by councillor Malone, is for approval of the report plus the additional recommendation that the capital plan be revised following the production of the executive director for children and families report into options for the provision of primary education in the Western Gateway. Convener.
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost.
Motion.
Councillor Dawson.
The motion.
Councillor Flynn.
Motion.
Councillor Hunter.
Motion.
Councillor Lynn.
Motion.
Councillor Rendall.
Motion.
Bailey Roberts.
Motion.
Councillor Rome.
Motion.
Councillor Ross.
Motion.
Bailey Sawyer.
Motion.
Councillor Short.
Motion.
Councillor Smith.
Motion.
Bailey Keenan.
Amendment.
Councillor Crookshank.
Amendment.
Councillor McCready.
The amendment.
Councillor McIrvin.
Amendment.
Councillor Malone.
The amendment.
Councillor Mara.
The amendment.
Councillor Richardson.
The amendment.
Bailey Wright.
Amendment.
Bailey Scott.
Amendment.
Councillor Hay.
Amendment.
Councillor Scott.
Amendment.
Bailey McPherson.
The motion.
Councillor Duncan.
Motion.
Lord Provost. Not sure the Lord Provost is still here. Councillor Murray.
Yeah, motion.
We have 16 votes for the motion, 11 for the amendment, so the motion is declared carried.
Thank you. And that is all the business. So as if by magic, finishing bang on half past eight. Thank you all for your contributions tonight and we shall see you again soon. Take care. Thanks.
Thanks, John.